To order at 1:02 PM. Ms. Johnson, can we please have a roll call vote? I did it again. A roll call?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I'll proceed with roll call. Chair Bonderson?
Yes, here, thank you.
Vice Chair Bauckey?
Here.
Commissioner Boss?
Present.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Here.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And with that, let's move on to our preliminary matters. Let's start with item 2A, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements of X agenda items. Mr. Busk, do we have any of those?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. We have none.
Thank you, Mr. Busk. Do we have any announcements or appeals?
Yes, I would like to announce that there have been a few projects appealed to the Planning Commission recently, so I will just list them. There was an appeal of the show decision at 225 Equestrian. That was for a modification. Appeal of a single-family design board final approval at 3208 Laurel Canyon and an appeal of single-family design board final approval at 101 Santa Cruz. So we anticipate scheduling all of these appeals for December.
Thank you. Just in case we didn't have enough, now we get appeals too. Wonderful. Okay. And lastly, we have review, consideration, and action on draft planning commission minutes for October 12th and for October 19th with the resolution number 011-2343237 State Street. And I'm going to take the motions separately for the two separate dates, since I believe we had some members who were not at both hearings. So let's begin with October 12th. Are there any commissioner comments for the October 12 minutes?
Madam Chair, yes.
Please, go right ahead.
I have distributed to my fellow commissioners and yourself and staff a correction to the minutes that go back to my discussion and conversation about enhanced infrastructure finance districts and it being a replacement for what the RDA used to do as far as tax increment and clarified what was said. I went through the tape and you did a good job trying to distill this is a better, in my opinion, way to say the same thing, but more clarity is appropriate.
Ms. Johnson, did you get the edits that Vice Chair Bauckey has asked for?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. Yes, I received them.
Thank you.
Chair, could we have the commission secretary read the comments so that the public can hear them?
Certainly. Thank you.
Yes, so the revised comments were for the report, page 8, column 2, the last full paragraph. So his updated comments were regarding the dissolution of the RDA's needs to be corrected. The use of tax increment financing by the RDA has had more impact on affordable housing than any other program the city has ever had. The last sentence of this paragraph is factually incorrect. The legislature has specifically provided a funding mechanism called an Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District to replace the RDA tax increment finance funding mechanism lost by the dissolution of the RDA. The city should be looking at the adoption of an Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District as a mechanism to fund affordable housing, especially for the income level of affordable housing which are not tax credit projects or the higher tiers that market-based projects may provide.
Vice Chair Bauckey, are you comfortable with that? Is that what you said?
Yes, she wrote it verbatim.
Very good. Okay.
And the others were just my name keeps being misspelled, but that's, I'm used to that, so.
Okay. Well, just trying to close the circuit, so it sounds like that is acceptable. Are there any other comments before we move forward? I see none. Are there any public speaker comments for any of the October 12th minutes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. We have none.
Okay. So may I have a motion for the October 12 minutes, please? Vice Chair Bauckey?
I move adoption of the minutes as corrected for October 12th. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? So let's go ahead and take a roll call vote with Vice Chair Bauckey's motion and the second by Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Chair Bonderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. And we're going to move on to the next one, which is October 19, 2023, and the resolution 009-2343237 State Street. Are there any comments? I see none. Ms. Johnson, any public comment?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. We have none.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio, and seconded by?
I'll second it.
Vice Chair Bauckey, please. So, Ms. Johnson, give us a roll call vote.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Abstain.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Chair Bonderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we will move on to comments from members of the public pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone in person or remote who would like to give a public comment on items not on today's agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. At this time, I do have one request to speak for Cassandra Enzberg. If you can make your way up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Enzberg.
Thank you. Greetings, Planning Commission, Chair Bonderson, and commissioners, and staff, and public. First, I want to say, just take a second to say how much I want to express appreciation for the work that you do. I understand how difficult it is, and I just want, I don't think there's enough appreciation given. So I just want to say thank you. I understand how difficult these positions are, and it's all pro bono, so thank you. I just wanted to start with that. I'm here, Cassandra Enzberg, I'm here representing the Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara and the Kidz Draw Architecture Program, and to bring you all a gift to start your day off really well. This is the Kidz Draw Calendar from 2024, and I hope you all have enjoyed the calendar from 2023. Last spring, roughly 50 artists of all ages, from 2 and 3/4 to 94, met at the El Presidio to sketch the beautiful adobe structure and the site. Commissioner Drury of the Historic Landmarks joined us, and we were delighted to have him. The calendars feature sketches from that day, including for the first time, a colored cover. This is a detailed drawing from the inside of the chapel by seven-year-old Otto Faust. The Kidz Draw Program was developed over 30 years ago as a way for designers and architects to come together and sketch alongside our youth and older about architecture, design, and that that makes our town unique and like no other. So please enjoy these calendars every day as inspiration and a reminder of why the work is so important. The calendars are available for purchase at the El Presidio gift shop, Chaucer's Books, the Book Den, and the Museum of Art, and the Architectural Foundation office. They're great gifts, and your purchase helps to support the program. Also, please join us and celebrate our youth at the 2023 exhibit that will be at the, the reception will be at the Atchison House, also the, on the corner of Garden and Victoria, Atchison House Gallery on Sunday, November 12th, from 1 to 3. Thank you from the Architectural Foundation and from all of us at Kidz Draw Architecture. Thank you.
And allow me to thank you, Ms. Enzberg. I have to say that I have had this calendar on my desk year after year for as long as I can remember, and I always go and get those for Christmas presents. So it's so nice to have you come here and share, maybe just remind all of us that they exist. I think it's a beautiful project that you have managed for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other commenters today for non-agenda items?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. At this time, I haven't received any other speaker slips. If you do wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you can fill out a speaker slip by the back door. I'm not seeing any other movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised, but we did receive one written correspondence from Darcy Sylvester, which was distributed to the commission prior to the meeting, so I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bonderson.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, so without further ado, we'll move on to our new item at 35 Anacapa Street, and we have case planner Kathleen Kennedy from the city here to give us our staff presentation. Ms. Kennedy, the floor is yours. Please feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. As you said, Kathy Kennedy, project planner. The project we're reviewing today is located at 35 Anacapa Street. Here is the vicinity map showing you the location, so it's at the corner of Anacapa Street and East Mason Street. And here's an aerial view of the project site. It's currently vacant, located right here in the funk zone. You can see how close it is to Cabrillo Boulevard and the railroad tracks. And on the other side of the project site is Helena Avenue. So I'll go over the proposed project, just overall summary of the project, and here's a rendering of the proposal from Anacapa Street, looking essentially at from the corner down Anacapa. So this project is a new three-story development. It's on a half-acre lot. It consists of six non-residential condominium units, so one condominium unit will be a tasting room, another will be a two-level restaurant, the third would be another tasting room, also a bodega or market. Then the hotel, one with the manager's unit, will be a separate condominium, and then the second hotel with its own manager's unit as well, will be the sixth condominium unit. Project includes 18 parking spaces and 24 bicycle parking spaces, and also some on-street bike parking spaces, which I'll show you on the floor plans, and they'll be removing two street trees and planting five new street trees on-site, or on the, in the public right-of-way. So the discretionary applications before you today are three: a vesting tentative map for the one-lot subdivision to create those six non-residential condominium units, two conditional use permits, one for each hotel, and then a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the coastal zone. So here is the first-floor proposal. So on the bottom here, this is Anacapa Street, and over to the right is East Mason. So if you were to enter the project, you would enter here in this driveway, one-way driveway in, parking here, and then one-way exit out onto East Mason Street. On the far left is the tasting room A, with some indoor and outdoor seating, and then in the center is the first floor of the restaurant, again indoor and outdoor seating. The corner is another tasting room with indoor and outdoor seating as well, and then some outdoor seating here associated with the market on this side. Entry to the hotel is through this location. There's a lobby and elevator going upstairs. And I'll switch to the next floor. So on the second floor, there's a second-level restaurant. You can access the restaurant from downstairs and come up through the elevator stairs. To the right area, and the rest of the second floor is all for the hotel. It's all hotel access only. There's reception area, back-of-house areas, storage. The two manager's units, one for each hotel, are located on the second floor. There's some outdoor lounge area and the pool. Want to note that the restaurant-hotel bar is separated. There's a separate hotel bar where hotel guests can access that bar separately, and then the public is allowed to access the restaurant from the downstairs and come up to the second floor. Third floor, this is the location of the two small hotels. So there's two six-room hotels, hotel one here, these first six rooms, and then the other six rooms for the hotel number two, and then some outdoor areas for the hotel guests. I'm not going to show the elevations. The applicant is going to propose or present all the elevations in detail for you, so I'm going to skip that part. Quickly to environmental review. Staff determines this is an infill exemption. It's consistent with all city policies, so it meets all the criteria, being less than five acres, there's no habitat value on the site, there've been no identified significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. All utilities and public services are available, none of the exceptions under section 15300.2 would apply to this project, and this is not a hazardous waste site per the Cortezi List, although there is some, there is a condition of approval to address some of the groundwater issues on the site. So I'm going to go into the zoning and policy consistency sections. So the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance in terms of setbacks, building height. It's consistent with our non-residential growth management program. It's using demolition credit and then just a little bit of extra minor addition credit. In regard to parking, they are required to park the hotel rooms. That's one space per hotel room. They are not required to park the rest of the uses on-site, per Assembly Bill 2097. The allowed uses that they're proposing are the restaurant tasting rooms. They're allowed to have a market, but it's limited to be 2,500. It's much less than that, and also allowed to have a small hotel with a conditional use permit. There are certain conditional use permit restrictions which they meet. There's a maximum of six guest rooms for each hotel. Each room in the hotel has a maximum of 300 square feet, and no kitchens are allowed, although there is a common kitchen dining area that could be provided, which they do not have in this particular design. Lobby areas are allowed, and then manager's units are allowed, a maximum of 600 square feet, so each hotel has its own separate manager's unit. Project is consistent with the general plan. I have the list here. I won't go through all of those, but consistent with the land use element, environmental resources element, and policies of the circulation element, and these are outlined in your staff report, and the actual policies are attached. In regard to the coastal land use plan, number of design policies are included that the project is consistent with these in terms of the design and development of the site, consistent with the stormwater management and flood policies. And there are two hotel policies that staff has determined that the project is consistent with. One, the lower-cost visitor and recreational facility policy, and the other, new hotel and motel development. For the first one, lower-cost visitor and recreational facility shall be protected, encouraged, and where feasible, provided. So you, I hope you've read the public comment letters. We did receive a letter from the Coastal Commission, and in their letter, they recommend that city staff determine whether this project meets the definition of a luxury overnight accommodation, because if it did, it would not conform to this lower-cost policy. And in that letter, they also recommended that additional information should be provided, including nightly room rates, of which we have, we do not have, and perhaps the applicant can speak to that, and the median cost of overnight room in Santa Barbara. In regard to that request, you may recall that for the 101 Garden Street project, we did receive an overnight accommodation summary from that applicant, and in their, in their summary, they provided not a median, but average daily rate for hotels in Santa Barbara, which I believe is about $278, sorry, approximately $258 per night would be the average in Santa So want to go over the OC zone a little bit in relation to this. So in 2004, the ocean-oriented commercial zone, the OC zone, was created in this interior portion of the HRC zone, so you can see it here. And here's the site south of the railroad tracks. The primary focus of the LCP amendments at time and the new OC zone was to limit hotel and visitor-serving uses while encouraging ocean-oriented and arts-related uses. That was the purpose at the time. So however, when this was being developed, the Planning Commission determined that it would be important to have not large hotels, they didn't want that, but smaller hotels in that area. So at the request of the Planning Commission, when the city submitted the LCP amendment to the Coastal Commission, they stated that for the OC parcels that are below the tracks, the amendment shall allow small hotels in a mixed-use setting with the CUP, and the maximum room size and the room amenities would be restricted, which they are, and I went over those, by the zoning ordinance, in an attempt to create affordable overnight accommodations near the beach. And Coastal Commission certified this, an LCP amendment. So the point being is that this ordinance does restrict the number of rooms, the sizes, types of amenities for these small hotels, and based on that, staff has determined that this would not qualify as a luxury overnight accommodation. Therefore, we are stating that it is consistent with LUP policy for lower-cost visitor facilities. So for your approval, there are a number of findings, sorry, glitch here, which I'm not, there are many, many pages of findings in this report, so I'm not going to go through them all, but it's the environmental determination, the coastal development permit, overall conditional use permit findings, and then there are specific findings for a small hotel, and then the vesting tentative subdivision map findings. So our recommended motion is to approve the vesting tentative map, conditional use permit for each hotel, and a coastal development permit, making the findings in the staff report, including the environmental review determination, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. We do have other staff here who could answer questions if you have them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kennedy. Next, we're going to hear from the applicant, and I understand you have a fairly large applicant team, so as you come up to the podium, I would just like to remind you, each time you switch a presenter, just please introduce yourself as you are coming forward, and let us know what your relationship is to the project, obviously as each one of you may take the podium. You will have 15 minutes. That's allotted to your presentation, but if you end up not using it all, you're welcome to reserve it for any time you want to come back up to the podium and maybe address something. We'll save it for you. All right, whenever you're ready, we should have a timer set for you, and you can begin.
Just wait for the slides to come up.
Of course. Anytime you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Bonderson, Vice Chair Bauckey, fellow commissioners. My name is Troy White with TW Land Planning and Development. I'm pleased to be acting as the agent for 35 Anacapa LLC, the property owner and applicant for this exciting project located in the funk zone. I want to thank Kathy, staff, for their great presentation and their hard work over the past several years. It's very much been appreciated. In this presentation, I'd like to begin by introducing the project team. So in addition to Jeff Timer with 35 Anacapa LLC, there's also, yeah, we'll just move forward to the next part, myself, the land use planner. We have Mark Kirkhart and Melissa Snarley Turner with Design Arc, the project architect, and EPT Design, Scott Capps, landscape architect. In addition, not with us today is Ashley Vance, engineering, and Bruce Jones, our civil engineer, so wanted to mention him as being a part of our project team. This is, let's see here, so this is a brief summary of the project. Kathy had spoke to the specifics. In summary, we're looking at two small hotels, six hotel rooms each, along with a small enough commercial space on the first and second floor. Next slide. As the composition of this commission has changed since we were last here on October 14, 2021, I'd like to provide a little background as to our efforts to date. In 2021, the original conceptual project received favorable comments from both ABR and Planning Commission. The ABR Planning Commission appreciated the concept, including the design, architecture, and the sustainability aspects of the project. The Planning Commission supported the proposal for a single operator of two hotels and the related condominium map. The Planning Commission did ask that we exercise some design creativity to distinguish the two hotels, which Design Arc will speak further to. We were asked if we had considered housing, and we certainly did. The OC zoning will not allow for housing development, as Kathy provided for. The only housing that we are allowed to provide within the zone district is for the manager's units for the two small hotels, and we have maximized that. There is one manager unit for each of the hotels. So we've worked hard with Design Arc to refine the project, along with the balance of the design team, based on the Planning Commission ABR comments. We're very excited to be presenting this project before you today. I'd like to turn over the presentation now to Mark Kirkhart with Design Arc, who will speak to the product's design. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bonderson, members of the commission. My name is Mark Kirkhart, principal of Design Arc Architects. We've had the pleasure of working on this project for several years now. I can tell you, at the outset, we were tasked to create a appropriately scaled mixed-use combination of uses that would, with generous outdoor patio spaces along the sidewalk that would activate the pedestrian experience, and further with the uses across the street kind of form a synergy on that block, and we think was been very successful so far, and that these uses would benefit not only guests and visitors to the funk zone, but also the residents of Santa Barbara. We have a couple images here. This is the southerly tasting room or commercial space with a generous patio in front along the sidewalk, very deep, and also recesses so that this can be a nicer view from Cabrillo Boulevard, looking down into the project. And we feel that this is also going to be a very good connection between the funk zone and the waterfront. This has been missing. This is the other corner at Anacapa and Mason, so you can see, this really shows how the architecture is layered back. It's really steps back away from the corner. From this view, you can't even see the third floor of the hotel rooms, so we think that part is really successful, and you can see there'll be activity on both the second and the third level. Those are, those are amenity spaces for the hotel rooms. I've already kind of, Kathleen has given you an overview of the floor plan, so I won't repeat everything, but I did want to point out a few items, like our trash enclosure is within the building, so that the trash will be pulled out and dumped and put back into the building, so we don't have an actual trash enclosure that's visible, for one thing. And we do also, we've included a bike corral for public parking on the corner there of Mason Street, so that's additional parking beyond the park, the bicycle parking that we have within our, within the project. And we will be doing pretty substantial improvements to the offsite, including bulging out the corner, as you see here, and for those of you out there for the site visit, we're going to underground the utilities along this section on both, on both Anacapa and Mason, which will be a tremendous improvement. Second floor, as has been pointed out, is basically the second floor of the restaurant. That restaurant is connected both indoors with a stair and with an elevator from the first floor to the second floor. The rest, the balance of this level is the two manager's units, as Troy pointed out. They're 600 square feet, which is the maximum size they can be under this ordinance, the ordinance, and the balance of it is basically hotel amenity and back-of-house. The third floor, or where the hotel rooms are, and as was stated already, we were asked by this, this board to make sure that we could make the two hotels look different. So you'll, what we've done is not only make them look different architecturally, but they even have different floor plans. So this shows on the left, the two rooms, they're hotel number one, with a bed against the party wall, where hotel number two has the bed floating in the middle of the room. We're going to have roll-up doors and other openings to get out to these private patios. So here, architecturally, you can see hotel number one is kind of more of an industrial look with the corrugated metal, a gable roof, and then it's broken in the middle between, hotel number two has one unit with a green roof on it to provide kind of a break between hotel number one and hotel number two, and then hotel number two has a single-sloped roof with solar collectors on it and the same patios, so that I think there's kind of no, it's pretty clear that there are two separate, two separate-looking hotels. This is an aerial view that further kind of exemplifies that, and you can see that from the green roof to the right is hotel number two, and in the gable roof to the, to the south, there is hotel number one. Just to talk real briefly here about the materiality, so it's pretty common down in the funk zone to see corrugated metal, and so that's one of our materials that we're using, and I just want to mention that it is going to be pre-weathered. It's not going to be going up there as shiny galvanized metal. It's a day one, it will be pre-weathered, so it'll already be a dull, dulled-down. We're also using some vert- We're also using some vertical cedar siding that will be stained in a very dark stain, almost black stain. This is reminiscent of a barn wood, or the type of wood you might see on an old, have seen on an old shed down in the Funk Zone. We also have naturally rusting steel, Corten steel, as well as an array of window types. We kind of think of this as kind of a village, an assemblage of different buildings, and each of the buildings will have different type of fenestrations. So the restaurant in the middle, you can see, is depicted with kind of old industrial steel, industrial sash windows, where the unit to the left, the commercial number one, that is going to be a roll-up garage door, and the units on the corner there are going to be more of a common commercial storefront. So a lot of variety. That's the intent, to really create kind of the village character. And as is pointed out, the, this is the exit from the garage here on the right, and the entrance into the hotel, as well as the entrance to the bodega. What's that? And we have this visual screening you can see on the garage door and up above here, which is a laser-cut steel, rusting steel. So we're actually putting some art into the building, as well as just applying it to the building. This is a photo, photo reel simulation. We took out the power poles just the other day, because it looks a lot nicer, and that's what we're planning to do. But you can see how it has a nice visibility and connection to State Street. So this client is also very, very interested in the whole art program for this project, and kind of which is really part of the Funk Zone as well. And so he's been very involved in the arts himself, having sponsored the New Noise concerts that were down in the Funk Zone a number of years ago. So we have an opportunity on the south end of the building, facing Cabrillo Boulevard, for a mural. That's not necessarily the mural we're proposing, we're just saying it's going to have lighting on it and it's going to be available. Also, down here on the lower left-hand corner, we're thinking about being able to do some art on the electrical transformer. And also, as I pointed out previously, that's where we have that laser-cut, laser-cut metal on the building. So not only are we applying art to the building, but we're having art that's actually built into the architecture. Another part that we're really, really excited about, this is the corridor that connects the parking garage out to Anacapa Street. You can see a little partial plan over there with an art display. Our idea is to have behind glasses, to have a revolving curated show, featuring both local artists, other artists from out of town, around the country or world, or whatever. And we would actually even host some open houses or openings, art openings for the artists. But you can see here, this kind of gives you an idea, featuring skateboard deck art at this particular time. The other thing that our client is very, and we are very interested in, is the whole idea of sustainability, and they are committed to going over and above the minimum requirements of, say, California's Title 24. They really want to target lead platinum. They want to go towards achieving net zero and carbon, and carbon, zero-carbon performance on the building. We have a consultant that we've brought in that's helping us do that work. It's going to be an all-electric building, including, by the way, the commercial kitchen. We're committed to moving to electric cooking for the commercial kitchen, even though we could install gas if we needed to, if we wanted to. And the alternative, we talked about that, for really going to encourage alternative transportation for employees coming to work. And this area, as you already know, is very, has a very low number of people that are actually driving here. They're either arriving in Uber, or they're walking from other hotels or taking bicycles. So that's it. We're going to be going for a lead, as well as a well-building certifications. And I'll be here for any questions you might have after that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Capps with EPT Design. I'm the landscape architect on the project. And looking at the landscape portion of the project, we've really started to design and organize the planting in terms of levels to complement the architecture that Mark just presented. Each level represents a unique planting community found throughout the Santa Barbara region, with that bottom row showing Accraid planting representing a more Oakland inspired plant palette, moving up to a more refined Mediterranean-inspired palette at the second level, and pulling in palms and softer textures at the third level to kind of grab onto those views down to the water. All the plants are a mix of native and regionally appropriate plant material. They are all low to very low water use. This results in a 20% less irrigation water use than the project is allowed. And in working with Ashley and Vance, our civil engineer on the project, we are mitigating stormwater on the project through the use of permeable surfacing, shown there in light blue at the entry drive off of Anacapa Street, as well as a series of onsite retention chambers shown across the site in dark blue.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson, and the rest of the commissioners. I'm Jeff Timer, the project applicant. You're watching a kind of a video walkthrough from the street of Anacapa right now. And just to give you kind of a better sense, it's hard when you have story poles, as you guys know, or if you have just, you know, 2D layouts, to understand kind of what we envision. And one of the things that I think, you know, thank you to our design team and our project team, we wanted to be something, we want to be a landmark for Santa Barbara. And that also goes to our values, as Mark touched on, which is we're committed to go all-electric in this building, which I think cannot be understated. I think it's something that we want to set example and a precedent in Santa Barbara for other commercial properties that don't have to do this. We need to encourage, in my opinion, the use of electric kitchens and innovate. And I'm pretty confident that someone's going to want to cook in this kitchen. So, you know, when the commercial real estate people tell you that they can't sell that, I would argue they can. So we're about to find out, hopefully. One of the, I think Mark also mentioned, we're local developers. I grew up here, I've been here for 35 years, I have a long history in the Funk Zone, as does two of our members of our project team, my dad, Jack Timer, and Mark, who both lived in the Funk Zone, actually, for, over the last 10 years, and have watched it evolve. And so we have a pretty good sense, I think, of the neighborhood, what is missing, what we feel like we can add, and I think the transition from that waterfront red tile roof into the Funk Zone is something that our neighbors, if you saw public comment, I'm proud that a lot of them are supporting us, understand too. And so I don't want to, I'm always left with the least amount of time, but we'll be here for answering questions and really kind of explore the vision with you guys on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. So next, we will go to public comment regarding specifically this item, and I'm going to turn to Ms. Johnson to guide us.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item, you can fill out a speaker slip by the back door and turn it into staff. I don't see any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised. We did receive 11 written correspondence for this item, which was distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bonderson.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So now I'll turn to my fellow commissioners for questions. Who would like to go first? I have Commissioner Boss, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'm really excited about the, about this project. I just have a few questions about some of the changes over the past couple of years. So first, regarding employee housing, very appreciative of seeing employee housing. And I want to confirm, because it's not in the conditions of approval, that it's two separate managers' units? Okay, thank you. Is that something that we can or should add to the conditions of approval? I'm thinking under B1, would it be appropriate there? And that's page 16, I think, of our packet.
Yes, Commissioner Boss, we can add that to that section.
Thank you. Another question, and this came up in the 2021 concept review, just wanted to talk a little bit more through the concerns about flooding. And I understand that from building and safety, the first floor of this project is required to be flood-proofed, and the lower portions of the building will need to be designed to resist impact loads, including the glazed windows or doors. So I'm not sure who can, is there more information that we can get about that?
Yes, once again, Mark Kirkhart from Design Arc. We were also the architects for the Hotel Californian, which essentially has the same condition as far as floodproofing. So that's all been installed on the Hotel Californian, so we're totally aware of what the procedures are. We have actually taken that into consideration as we've been designing it. You know, you don't have to hold the water at the line of the building, where we have those patios out in the dining in front on the sidewalk. We're proposing to use that low wall, as well as some flood, you know, you have to put some gates in there temporarily during the flood. So we're totally up to speed with it. We've done it before numerous times, so it's pretty much a standard course.
Great. Thank you for that additional information. I want to get to the note in this, I was looking at page eight out of 97, around the lower-cost hotel, and I think you had a couple of slides on this, 18, 21, and 22 for Ms. Kennedy. And I want to look back at that and just make sure that I'm understanding, because we also got the letter from the Coastal Commission. My understanding is that in terms of a lower-cost hotel, that it's assumed due to restrictions on size, there isn't a condition needed. So can you talk about kind of the state restrictions, local restrictions, and how we, how or if or can we require it be a lower-cost hotel?
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner Boss, I'm looking for this restriction slide here. So we are assuming to a certain extent that they're lower cost based on these restrictions, and these restrictions were added to, to make them affordable, if possible. So that was the whole purpose of this, my understanding from the Planning Commission at the time. So these are restricted to very small rooms, very small number, no amenities that are typical of a luxury accommodation. So we feel that, because of that, it definitely is consistent with that policy.
Enter Bonderson and Commissioner Boss. To add to that, as the policy is specifically written, it does say that the city shall not require that overnight room rentals be fixed at an amount certain for any privately-owned and operated hotel, or to establish or approve any method for the identification of low or moderate income persons for the purpose of determining eligibility for overnight room rentals in any such facilities. So there are limited ways that we have to ensure that they're lower cost. That was the intent of the zoning restrictions, as Ms. Kennedy noted. So for that reason, we find that it's consistent with the policy.
Right. So I want to summarize to make sure that I'm understanding. So the intent was to encourage a lower-cost hotel, but there's nothing to set that lower cost of hotels. Thank you, to enforce it. Thank you. Also want to talk about, and I think this may be a question for Ms. Grant, just in the area, pedestrians, myself included, have a loose relationship with crossing the street whenever we'd like. So can you address how we'll keep all of us, all of the pedestrians and bike riders, safe?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Boss, to the chair. Thank you for bringing up the site plan. I'll go over a few of the safety amenities from a pedestrian standpoint, and actually all modes. So beginning with the curb extension at the corner. So purposes of curb extensions are to lessen the amount of time that pedestrians are in the roadway. And they're also, when you're a pedestrian trying to cross the street and you're at that curb extension, for a driver's cone of vision, you see the pedestrians much sooner than if it was just a standard intersection. And so, again, that also causes drivers to slow down, better yielding. There's also, the project does comply with the pedestrian master plan, and that it also has the nice parkway amenities, and then that just provides a buffer for pedestrians from parked cars and the travel way. It also provides, the landscaping provides shade for pedestrians as well, and the trees also provide calming for along the street. And the other last things when we think of pedestrian safety as well is the driveways. And so you'll see the little triangles for the exit driveway on, yes, thank you, Kathy. And then that is to provide line of sight. So for vehicles exiting the garage, they will have proper views of pedestrians.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. A question for, I think, the applicant. In 2021, when you came for the concept review, there were a lot of comments, I think, from the Planning Commission at the time, and also from some of the other boards or committees about the steps in the corner, and they're really complimentary of that, and it's shifted a bit now. Can you talk about that process?
Yeah, happy to do that. Once again, Mark Kirkhart from Design Arc. So yes, the original design had a large pedestrian, a wide pedestrian stairway going up to the second floor, which was an attempt in our design of thinking about trying to get people up to the second floor, which we knew, even when we were proposing it, is going to be, was going to be challenging. And so after some more thought, after getting the comments, hearing other people at the ABR and others voicing the same concerns, you know, we went back, ownership went back and kind of reevaluated the program altogether and decided, you know, let's come up with a design that does not require trying to get commercial uses up on the second floor. It's a great idea on paper. It works in some very, you know, super-dense urban areas, you might be able to get something like that to work. But we just kind of came to the conclusion that we wanted to see the project succeed, and this seemed like the most direct way to really keep all the commercial on the ground floor, and just have the second floor as the amenity for the hotel. And so that's why, that's how it evolved.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I was looking for the stairs in the design, so now I have a better understanding. I had one more question, I think, for the applicant. You talked a bit about engaging artists and this being really a sustainability model. Can you talk more about the community partners? You referenced some in 2021 of who you might be working with. Can you talk more about that here?
I don't, Jeff Timer again, owner-applicant. I don't recall in 2021 exactly what I was referencing, but, you know, obviously, I've worked with Santa Barbara County Arts Commission. Sarah York Rubin has been a homie of mine, someone who I respect. Ginny Brush, I worked with a lot, who has since retired and is fishing somewhere, but she inspired, you know, has introduced me to a lot of great kind of mentors in the art community. So my buddy Marcelo, he's a Santa Barbaraan. He's someone who I think I would count on to help provide some curation. But, you know, there's a lot of people doing stuff in the Funk Zone. Mike Matheson, Metal TP is a great artist. DJ Javier is across the way and has done a lot of the murals you see downtown. So my, one of the things I did when I was producing music was, you want to have local artists, but you also want to inspire local artists, right? So one of the things when I curate something is, you want to have that international artist that's being shown, so that others in the community have something to look for, and look, and make networks and community, and make thus rise the level of art. And so that's kind of my theory with this. And then we're going to encourage our commercial tenants to incorporate art into their, into the building, because as you guys know, it's like, we don't want someone to be in there that is going to fail. And so to us, it's important that they share our values, like I said, that they are committed to sustainability, and that they do have some sort of arts program, and we lease these spaces.
Thank you. And on that same note, can you expand on really this being a sustainability model and how you came, any partners that were involved, just out of curiosity? I know it's not.
No, yeah, you know, I worked a lot with the Community Environmental Council, so throughout the years on Santa Barbara Earth Day. So I actually reached out to them recently and talked to them about going all-electric and what that means, and is that important, because I don't want to just be greenwashing, so to speak. And they did say that that's very important. So I think we'll also work with, you know, Vertical Group is our sustainability consultant, who will help us with commissioning during design and development. So that's an important thing, as we, as you guys probably know, is integrating that sustainability into the actual design, so you're not just going back and value engineering everything out. So that's something that we're considering, and, you know, as long as we can, you know, I hate saying that, make it pencil out, we're going to go, we actually believe that more upfront money now is going to be a long-term win. So if you build something for the future, i.e. electric cars, putting enough EV stations, putting in an all-electric kitchen, right, and try to think ahead, that that will come back on, you know, whether it's a cap rate or the building's value. So that's how I think about it. I might be naive, and, you know, we shall see.
Thank you so much. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Boss. And next we have Commissioner Wardlow, please.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. Thank you, Commissioner Boss. She asked many of the questions that I had and that was really helpful. I want to dig into one of the questions that Commissioner Boss asked of staff. So understanding that we cannot, you know, put in a specific dollar amount or restrict this in any way in terms of the price point, could you provide the definition of what a luxury overnight accommodation is so that we can understand what this cannot be?
Commissioner, Chair Bonderson, Commissioner Wardlow. We don't have a definition of that, but the way we have looked at it is high-end amenities. So valet parking was one, high-end restaurants, maybe multiple restaurants, lots of amenities for the guests. So it's a relative kind of question or definition, but hopefully that helps.
And so given the Coastal Commission's letter, do they have a price point in mind? Or is there a standard that they're, you know, suggesting against this?
I'm not sure of that.
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner Wardlow, not that we're aware of. As Ms. Kennedy said, I think it's all relative. Each area probably has its own price that would be considered lower cost. However, I don't know what that would necessarily be for Santa Barbara.
Got it, so it's pretty ambiguous. Ms. Osteringer, may I ask you a question? Am I allowed to ask the applicant if they have a projected price point for this project per room?
Yes.
Wonderful.
No, I was actually hoping to address this because it's very, I've watched your past hearings on Garden Street and it is very nebulous of what the intent was. I think the point is we've already been conditioned with that 300 square feet, no restaurants, we have no big conference room facilities that would kind of allow us to be more seen as a luxury hotel. I do not know what the ADR is going to be. It's going to be probably, you know, I don't know. You know, we want to be able to build this and we want it to underwrite. But that said, I'm not going to give you a guess. I will say, we're not going to be the Miramar. And that's what I look to as Bacara, Miramar, those are luxury, big rooms. They got facilities, they have spas. We do not have a spa, I would love one if you want to let us. We figure we're going to use our neighborhood. So for example, we might not even have a gym. We might use the base, which is half a block down, for our gym facilities. So think about it as more of like, not Airbnb, and I'm not going to say it's like one of those, you just show up and you have your phone and blah, blah, blah. But it is going to be limited by design. And I know that's horrible to say, but at 300 square feet, I don't think, we're not going to be able to attract those high-end $3,000 night rates. That's my opinion, I could be wrong.
I appreciate that answer, thank you. A question on the landscaping. And in the previous commission, there was comments suggesting that they would like to see more than 5% of the area designated to landscaping. Did we go above that or where are we with that, given their previous comments?
Good afternoon, Scott Capps again, landscape architect. My understanding is that we did increase the landscaping from previous plans with the inclusion of more green roofs and did we add more landscaping at the ground level? Yeah, especially in front of the tasting room on the south side.
It does look very beautiful, so just wanted to make sure that that was incorporated. And then I also saw information in the staff report regarding a free shuttle. Does anyone have any more information on the free shuttle and where that would be going?
So, good afternoon. So we have a transportation demand management program and that is incorporated into our staff report. We did work with city staff, transportation staff. And so it will be making use of free shuttle passes for anything that the city might provide. So we're not going to have our own shuttle. But they'll be, you know, we'll have, obviously we're near the train station. And so really the goal is to encourage folks to arrive via alternative means of transportation. And so to the extent they need bus or shuttle passes, that'll be something we'll be incorporating into our programming.
All right, thank you.
Another thing that we're committed to is if you arrive by train, we will give you a discount. I don't know what that is, but we want to encourage alternative transportation. And we're so lucky to be near the Amtrak. And I love people who say, oh, how are you going to have a hotel on a railroad track? No one's going to want to stay there. I believe they're wrong. And I also believe people who say they don't use the train, people from regional areas. I believe, I live in Carpinteria right now and people do come by train. And so we're going to look to encourage that and actually market it as part of like, if you arrive car-free and stay car-free, then we're going to encourage that. We might, because we have the parking allocation, actually have a hospitality vehicle that's like an EV that can live in like a Zipcar kind of situation where they could, so if they want to make use of a vehicle while they're here, that we could do that for them for a price or, I don't know if it's going to be complimentary or for a price, but that is something we've thought about.
Thank you, I think that's great. One last question, and Ms. Osteringer, please let me know if this is out of scope. But in terms of the two housing units for the management staff, which I really appreciate that that's happening, is there a plan or mechanism to ensure that the cost of that is actually affordable given the rate that that individual will be paid?
We have not figured out yet operationally how that's going to work. Maybe it could be, you know, we look at it as an incentive, right? So if you have someone who is going to be making X amount of dollars to be a manager on site, if we offer them free housing, I mean, that seems like a pretty good comp, right? So.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't understand that it was free housing.
Well, I'm saying that's an option to have in lieu of salary of some sort, right? But we haven't envisioned that yet, so.
Chair Bonderson and to Commissioner Wardlow, from the city's standpoint, we have nothing that we, no ordinance or anything in place that we can condition it.
But I think it's clear, it's an attractive.
Right, I mean.
It's an attractive amenity that reduced, I would say, as part of their salary comp. But again, we're not, we're not the, we're not at that point yet.
I appreciate the answer, thank you, that's my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow. Next we have Commissioner DeLucio, please.
Okay, this is going to be a hard one since Commissioner Boss asks such excellent questions. But I did want to go back, the first question you asked was about the managers' units and a possible condition. I didn't really hear you, can you repeat that?
Yes, I should find it in my notes. The request was to include the two managers' units in the conditions of approval. So that would be on page 16 under B1 where it's a project description. So just clarifying.
To account for them, as part of the condition, is what you're saying?
Adding the two manager units, yes.
Okay, I don't have a lot to say because I actually think the, my former commissioners and current commissioners that were here in 2021, I think they did a lot of work in flushing out all the issues and questions that we would have today. The only concern I obviously have is the Coastal Commission did write a letter. And if we were to approve it today, I mean, what could happen?
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner DeLucio, if you are interested in approving the project today, you may want to augment the findings to be a little bit more specific that based on the information, you find that this is not a luxury hotel. You could add findings to respond to their concerns. If this project is approved, it can be appealed to the city council. The majority of the project site is in the non-appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. However, a very small portion is technically appealable. So potentially it could be appealed to the Coastal Commission. Potentially the Coastal Commission could appeal it to itself.
Got you, and I have one final question. I understand we are not here to set the rate of what the hotel is going to charge. And that's what I think they were alluding to in here. Were they reading into one of the conditions that you need, what was the average of the rates that were going in Santa Barbara? And from, based on that, would they be charging a similar rate or making some of the accommodations if indeed it was luxury? Is that what that letter was saying?
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner DeLucio, I don't want to interpret their letter beyond what it says. That may have been the intent though of asking for information about average room rates in the area.
Okay, and we've, and the findings that we're making here, we're illustrating there's other ways to do that, to make that, to make, to make, we have to make the finding for that call out, but there's other ways to make it besides the way they're suggesting that we do it. I think is what we're saying here, correct?
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner DeLucio, they are definitely aware that we cannot be setting room rates. So I don't think they're asking for that to be necessarily established. But I think just looking for general information about the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Next we'll go to Commissioner Wiskom, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Capps, could you just pop up here? And could we get the slide up that showed the permeable pavement, please? I didn't see any numbers on your slide, so I didn't know that. With the blue in it, you know what I'm talking about?
That'll be for the applicant's presentation.
Right, that's, yeah. There it is, okay. So I'm just curious, you've got some other areas there that are that light gray that go across towards East Mason on Anacapa Street. So what's the pavement there? Oh, and why are we not continuing permeable pavement?
That was the original design intent. In working with County of Santa Barbara Environmental Health Services, there is some water contamination in that area. And so they specifically said, we do not want to see percolation in that area. And so that's the reason why we removed the.
Okay.
So it's environmental condition.
I get it now, okay, thank you for that answer. That, it was just puzzling to me that it wasn't continued, okay. And then I have a question, I think for one of you, probably, I don't know which one of you. There's a possibility that we're going to get commuter train service back here. That's been in the news. And we have the bus passes, MTD will do the bus passes for employees. Would you also consider doing the train, commuter train if that's what we get? And if so, we could put it in the conditions of approval if the commuter train works for some employees?
So as in, we pay for the commuter train?
You're already paying for the bus passes.
Yeah, I think that's something we would definitely consider.
So you'd be acceptable with that?
Yeah, for the, of course, for the, I guess it's a little hard vision because we're not going to be operating all the spaces. But I think, yes, I think that's the intent.
Okay, so we could add that, and that would be on.
Maybe my land use planner before, my big mouth gets in the way.
Oh no, here we go.
So when we're talking conditions of approval, of course. So will we consider, absolutely. Are we completely 100% underwrite it? I don't think that we're prepared to commit to that today. So obviously we want to encourage the use of mass transit. We're very much a believer in that. But I don't, we don't know what the cost of that train service will be. And so whether it be utilized by employees and/or by guests. So are we interested in promoting it, absolutely. Underwriting it in some respects, yes, 100% underwriting. I don't know that we commit to that today.
Well, you are already committing to free of charge bus passes for employees.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I've, you know, I've looked at, you know, transit via train and particularly Amtrak. It tends to be pretty darn expensive, much more so than MTD. And so it's a much larger price point than that which we committed to in working with city staff. So we would really need to study that. And we're not prepared to commit to that today, I apologize.
Okay, okay. And then I had a question for Ms. Osteringer.
Commissioner Wiskom, through the chair, just to add, again, the train service that you're alluding to, there's potential for Metro Link to come online. Again, we don't have, it's not time certain yet.
Right.
But there is other possibilities and through the SBCCAG traffic solutions that try to encourage alternative means for all county employees. Not employees, but like workers within the county. So there might be other programs that come online later as well, just that are given countywide.
That would advantage these employees that are commuting. Okay, okay, thank you for that, Ms. Grant, I appreciate it. And then Ms. Osteringer, I had a question for you. We looked at, the Planning Commission looked at a condominium project a while back. And I think it was, was it hotel units? Yeah, it was hotel condominiums.
On garden.
Yes, in an existing building, yeah. And we conditioned or we changed the conditions of approval since it was a condominium project to say owner with apostrophe S because there might be multiple owners since it's a condo project. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't do that here too, since this is a condominium project? Because there's references here, let me just see where they are. Yeah, I was looking at page 12 and 13 of 14. The owner or all employees shall contact the MTD. And there's all sorts of conditions about what owners need to, what the owner needs to do. And since there may eventually be multiple owners, I thought we should change that to wherever possible, wherever it makes sense, change it to owners. Or owner with apostrophe S. Apostrophe S, no parentheses. I don't even know my own grammar anymore.
In the conditions of approval, we do say there is a parentheses around owners and then friends owners and then occupants. So would that satisfy if you look up page?
Yeah, wherever we, there's all sorts of things that the owner needs to do. And if we're going to, if we may eventually have multiple owners, I just would like to change that to owner parentheses S for that. It's a technical thing, but I think it's probably worth it for a condominium project. We've done it, we did it on another one.
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner Wiskom, I can't see a legal reason why we couldn't do that. It's more of a technical.
Commissioner Wiskom, just to clarify, it is inconsistent throughout the document. So I can see where we'd want to be consistent the way we do it. These condos are different than those, that other hotel project because with that project, each hotel room was, had a different owner. So we did have unique concerns that we addressed through some changes to wording. But I think your comments still would apply to this situation where the entire condominium parcel is one hotel owner owning all six rooms.
Well, and that's particularly in light of the fact that we have two different manager units. So there might be two different owners of those two six-room hotels. In the future, yeah. And as I recall on the other project that was going to condominium hotel units, the one owner owned them all. And, you know, he didn't say that he had an intention to sell them, but that was kind of the implication. And that, I think this is set up for that flexibility. So I think it would be appropriate to do that.
I'm happy to speak to that if you like. We're of course completely fine with that. Of course, the conditions of approval run with the land. So any owner automatically assumes the permit.
Right.
Automatically assumes the condition, so just to add to that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's the end of what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Next we'll go on to Vice Chair Baughy.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Madam Chair. Ms. Kennedy, could you put, first off, thank you for your historic description of how we got here, so the provisions. Could you put up the zoning map that you had in your presentation? Yeah, that's the one. And the reason why, I got a question. What was the thought at the time that the funk zone as an area has two designations? You've got two designations there and different requirements. I'm trying to understand why we came up with two different ones and there's bright lines here.
It's my understanding.
It's my understanding that we wanted to limit the hotels in the OC zone. So that's why the OC zone was created, to not allow hotels and have it mostly ocean commercial related.
Okay, so, so, okay, so because of that, that's why we're seeing these, because of the zoning map, this is why we're seeing inconsistencies of what we see in the funk zone, is like, we've got the Garden Street Hotel, which is 250 units, hotel units, and here we're talking about where we can't have more than six per parcel. And, you know, we got these very, I mean, from somebody from the outside, we'd think we're living in La La Land or something. It's like, what, how, how does this work? And what was the thought process?
Chair Bonderson and Commissioner Bauke, part of the reason the OC zone came into existence, or the concept was discussed, was because they knew about the specific plan for 101 Garden, which identified 250 rooms. They also knew about the Hotel Californian project, Entrada project, which had many hotel rooms. And so they were seeing all these, as well as the Waterfront Hotel, which had a specific plan, identified hotel rooms. And so they saw all these hotel rooms that were going to be coming online, and there was a concern that we had too much land that was only zoned for hotels, and that there were enough hotels with the existing zoning, and that this area could reflect the existing kind of art-related uses that have been in the area. So that's, that's kind of why it came this way. There are areas, as you identify, that have the dual zone, so they still have the HRC2 zone. And I don't know exactly, but I can only presume that the intent was that they found that those were good areas to still allow hotels, and so they didn't want to eliminate that completely in those areas.
And that's why we got like, you know, you're going to have six type standards. Okay. Some of that doesn't make any sense to me, but I'll leave it at that. Transportation staff, could you, we had a discussion with an adjacent property on Helena, and back, it's a couple, a couple times it's been here and was approved not too long ago, about parking as a whole for the funk zone, and whether the city has conceptually thought about a parking district, or expanding a parking district, to look at the funk zone holistically for parking? Because I know the state's taken a lot of the requirements off, but there's still a demand, you know, and, but it should, it'd be best with a system, if that was possible. I wasn't sure where we are on that.
Commissioner Bauke, through the chair, that's a great question. There was a few years back, the funk zone parking study report, and, and I can link that to you all through Ms. DeBusschere, because that's great background. And it did, this was pre-pandemic when the study was done. But it did look at, from on-street parking to park adjacent public parking facilities. And bottom line for this summary for that report was that there was enough parking, but there is a better way to manage that parking. And, and that was, one of the recommendations that came from that was to look at on-street priced parking. And it did not gain traction by the city council at that time, but certainly not off the table for future discussions on better management of that. But generally, as far as available parking in the funk zone, it, it does meet the, the demand. And then for this project, again, they're located next to, probably within one to two blocks of several parking, public parking facilities.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your response. Thank you for the background. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bauke. And that leaves me. So I'm going to start with a question for transportation. Ms. Grant, I wanted to go a little bit more in-depth about the way that we understand the bicycle activity, but specifically the, those four-wheeler kind of tourist bikes that we have in this specific area, but actually, we have right next door. They're going to be renting bicycles and then zipping right into the street to get over, hopefully, they're going over to the bike path. But there's a distance that they need to navigate before they get there. Is there anything in our transportation guide that helps manage the way that those types of bicycles or regular bicycles use this area?
Good question, Chair Bonderson. For that, I mean, it, it's not really related to this topic today, but that is an allowed type of bike that could be anywhere where cars are allowed, bikes are allowed by California law. So from that aspect, there, it's completely legal for them. Whether it's comfortable for all ages and abilities to do some of the maneuvering to then get to the beachway is another story. But always continuing to try to improve our bike network. And then this is an area, again, waterfront downtown, where we see very high percentages of, of biking. So trying to facilitate just like, for good pedestrian facilities, also to have good bike facilities.
That's exactly why I was asking, because I know that the current transportation and circulation crew has all sorts of plans in the works, and we don't always know what's going on. We're not privy to all the projections. But do you have any projection of improvement in this area at this time? And not just for these four-wheelers, but just in general, bike and pedestrian improvements?
The, the biggest improvement at this time is currently under construction, and that's the State Street undercrossing, to have a better connection between the downtown and waterfront. And that's where we see some of the highest ped and bicycle collisions at the intersection approaches to that, and then in the underpass as well. So that will be, once that's constructed, and you'll see it under construction now, maybe pass by it during your site visit. And so that should be up and running in about two years for that. And then the rest of it, we see a little bit, there's a lot of shared facilities in the funk zone. So to get to the higher level facilities then comes at a cost of removing on-street parking. So that would be probably for our next bicycle master plan update, is to, to have those community conversations.
Thank you. That, that was a complex answer, but I, I look forward to potentially having that on our future to-do list. Think this area could use it. And it would affect, positively affect the, 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 those of you building in this area and using the area daily. Okay, my next question, we'll go back to our applicant team, and it has to do with the car-free concept that you spoke about earlier. So I don't know which one of you would like to join me at the podium. But earlier, you mentioned something about, you know, giving benefits to the guests if they use, if they come to Santa Barbara using different types of public transportation. I was interested to know if you've put any thought in encouraging your employees to be car-free as well, especially those who may be coming from farther locations, and how you might consider providing benefits to them as well?
So if you refer to page 27 of your staff report, that speaks to our transportation demand management program, and the things that we work closely with city staff on developing this program. So we'll have a, an onsite TDM administrator. And so that individual will be responsible for working with SB CAG's Traffic Solutions. Many of you have probably had some experience with them. I certainly have. And so SB CAG Traffic Solutions is a wonderful service that's provided by this regional governmental body, where individual employers can work with Traffic Solutions on identifying, you know, means and methods that are most appropriate to individual businesses. So the presumption is that each suite is its own entity, its own body. So we'd have a TDM administrator for the entire property, and then we'd be working with those tenants and with Traffic Solutions on, working on programs to encourage, incentivize the use of, of alternative transportation. So that's broadly speaking.
Big picture, yeah.
A big picture. And then, of course, you know, posting of bus routes and whatnot inside, you know, wherever you have all your HR, you know, posters, that we'd be able to provide that information as well. So I'm happy to go point by point through.
No, no, the answer is yes, right? You have considered it for your employees. And that leads me back to Ms. Grant. So thank you for, for joining me at the podium. Now, we've, I think, directed this question at you for a few other projects this year alone, other hotel projects, bigger projects that have come our way. And I remember on one particular project, I don't know, in the summertime, we spoke about the commuter bus that is put out countywide, and it takes you traditionally, you know, from a point here nearby, wherever it may be, down to Ventura, for example, or further. And at that time, we asked if, as a city, as a community, we're able to assign those types of bus stops, or add a bus location for pickup in the funk zone, because the other projects were also in this general area. And I'm just interested to know, is that, when we look at these conditions, when we talk about, you know, number three, A, B, C, D, E, F, like, is that part of this conversation? Or can it be?
Commissioner Bonderson, that's a great, a great question. Yes, there, there's commuter services from both the, yeah, Ventura County into Santa Barbara, and then from the North County as well into Santa Barbara. So I think it's always hard to, for the applicant, because they don't know who the employees are or where they originate from. I, I think what you're hearing from them is they're, they're open to providing and encouraging alternative means. The, the only restrictions for those versus like a hotel operation in time of day, it's, it's really set up for more the, the nine-to-five.
You're right.
Workers may, may not necessarily work out in the late evening hours for the hotel or the tasting rooms, et cetera.
I guess my follow-up question with that is, and, and maybe the answer is, you're not the person to ask. But if we were to consider this, and it has come up a few times just this year alone, in the last 10 months since the beginning of the year, let's say, I'm just wondering how many times we can talk about this when projects come to us, especially larger-sized projects in the funk zone, wonderful opportunities to establish this type of service, and more for the service-type jobs. I completely agree with you. They're not nine-to-five jobs. So how do we maybe find a culture within our community to then serve with this type of commuter bus system into North County and Ventura? I'm asking, are you the person that looks at this inside your office, or is there someone else we should be talking to, someone else?
I'm a spoke-on-the-wheel, that we're, I am also part, and I chair the Technical Advisory, Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, and Joint Technical Advisory Committee through the SB CAG. And it's made up of members of both, we have planning and public works representatives for our entire county to discuss all things transportation and all things planning.
Okay.
They're just about ready to send out through SB CAG as unmet transit needs or feedback. And so just, I encourage you, just even as a, just a member of the community, now's the time for some public comment related to that. And I can certainly relay the, the comments back to the board. And then, again, we're an advisory board to the SB CAG board, which is made up of all of the mayors within our county.
Thank you. And I won't take any more time. It's not directed at the applicant at this point. It was more curiosity of how we can serve this project, other projects, future projects. And I would love it if you would relay it on our behalf, since it's come up a few times here. Thank you. Back to the project at hand. I have one last question. It may be a two-part question, and it has to do with the conversation that we've already started with other commissioners. I would like to know, this goes to staff, how can we, or how do you recommend that we augment the finding, or a new finding, to address the non-luxury issue? And how do we, how do we refer to that ambiguous definition that doesn't really exist of what non-luxury rates are? Or is there a range? Or is there somebody who knows, and we therefore refer to it generally? Do we refer to the Coastal Commission? Do we refer to whoever it is that would otherwise enforce that rate or that range? Does my question make sense? Let's start with that question. Can I change my, can I present it in a different way? Just so you're not trying to dig through the mud? Okay, so previously, you had suggested, you, Ms. DeBusschere, had suggested potentially augmenting or adding a finding. And the topic, as we were discussing it, was we don't particularly have a definition of what the non-luxury is. And then the definition is, there isn't a definition. It's a little bit ambiguous. How do we, how can you help us, guide us to add a finding without specific information that will still cover what we need to cover?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. Yes, I think I understand. I think, as an example, if you wanted to augment the coastal development permit findings, it could be either number one, number two, or both. One refers to Coastal Act, one refers to our coastal policies. They have the same policy about lower-cost visitor accommodations. You could add a sentence that says, you know, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed hotel does not constitute a luxury hotel, because it does not include the types of amenities that would be included, such as spa, high-end restaurant, valet, those types of things. And then you could also tie it back to the city's kind of essentially built-in mitigation to keep these lower costs is by having the smaller room sizes and small hotel size overall.
Okay, that makes great sense. And I'll encourage my colleagues to bring that back up when we're ready to make a motion, if it's something we want to consider. My next question is, and this is the second part of that same question, is there room, maybe, Ms. Osteringer, is there room in the conditions for enforcement in the event that, because there are multiple businesses here, there's a potential to have multiple business owners, if somebody's not paying attention to the conditions that go with the purchase or the management of the property, and they change their rates or whatnot, is there a specific step-by-step methodology to help support enforcement before enforcement actually takes place?
Chair Bonderson, there's nothing we would put in the conditions of approval beyond that if the city zoning, could enforcement staff went out and looked, and it did not appear to be that it was a low, low-cost visitor-serving accommodation that is described in the conditions of approval, then we would enforce on it. Obviously, there's these very specific things that are intended to keep at low cost, the, the limited square footage of the room size. That's what we would be looking if someone was to expand that. That would be a clear violation of the conditions of approval and be easy to enforce.
I suppose I'm looking at it from a slightly different point of view. If it's already built, even if it's a smaller room, we can always ask for more money to rent the same small space. How do we control that over time, it doesn't get more, it doesn't, they don't charge more for that room?
Chair Bonderson, it's based on the market. So the room can't be set. It's, for example, one of the reasons I, I assume that the Coastal Commission doesn't say you can, you must set rates at this is because it's really what, what the market is going to accommodate. You know, when we were in COVID, the cost of hotels like plummeted. And now, when we're recovering, they're going up. It's just, it's a matter of.
So it follows market, and it just follows whatever that range is within the market?
Right. And I anticipate perhaps that's why the Coastal Commission hasn't come up with an exact definition of what luxury is, as opposed to low cost, is because it's somewhat ambiguous.
I have no doubt.
Particularly place to place.
Well, that answers my question. I just wanted to kind of get a general understanding. So I will now end the question period unless, oh, yeah, please do, Commissioner DeLucio.
I need a clarification. Is there going to be C, our CCNRs as part of this? And they'll be connected to the condition and use permit? Have they referenced, is there a condition that references the CCNRs? Okay.
Yes, there is.
And is there, I have another question. Is there going to be, is there a, like, if you have a CCNRs and you like having association, is there some kind of general management of this operation, once it, it gets all divided up? Can somebody answer that question? How that's going to work?
Yeah. Well, I've owned a condo in my life as well. I'm sure some of you have as well. So there's this, an HOA. So there's an HOA, it's either a homeowners' association, in this case, since we don't have homes, it's an owners' association. I've worked on many business parks throughout the years. So after the master developer walks away, the board steps in and they help manage the building. And so whether that's securing insurances or utilities and dealing, dealing with the problems that come up, that board will be responsible for.
They'll be dealing with the condition, they'll have a copy, obviously, of the conditional use permit.
It'll run with the land, it'll be recorded, and that'll be something, obviously, that'll be actively managed.
And they'll have the CC, CC, CCNRs and the conditional use permit, which they're responsible to follow.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. And I was asked this week by staff to try something new. We're going to start with you, Ms. Kennedy, hopefully it's going to be in your favor. Surprise. I understand that when you project slides, you can't actually take notes on your computer because otherwise you would be projecting those as well. So I've been asked not to have you project a slide for the entire deliberation period, but to just start our deliberation period with a quick slide for a moment, you can turn it off when you're done and we're about to start. But just remind us what you'd like us to focus on, and then I'll open the deliberation period to my colleagues.
So this is the slide, and I'm not going to be using the computer for other reasons, so it's fine with me if you leave it up.
Okay, very well. Thank you for letting me know, so the experiment will not begin with you. But I'll just encourage my, my fellow commissioners to remember what the recommended motion or the direction we're supposed to be focusing on is here today. And I would like to welcome any of my colleagues who'd like to start, we have Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can make the findings recommended in the staff report and the recommended motion on the slide. I have a few comments and notes to augment the conditions of approval, which we've had in kind of the question deliberation period so far. But first, I want to thank the applicant for making changes based on the past comments from the Planning Commission, especially around distinguishing the hotels. Couple of other notes, I think I said it before, but I really appreciate the employee housing and the consideration to encouraging alternative transportation, alternative to vehicles among potential clients or visitors, but also among employees or staff. I did want to request that we add to the, the conditions of approval on page 16 under B1 to include the two manager units, just for clarification there. Also appreciation for the public right-of-way improvements and making, I think, the whole block and the area a lot safer for pedestrians, vehicles, and bicyclists. I think it'll be a really welcome improvement. And especially want to recognize that I see this as a model for sustainability, and I think you're taking a huge step with the solar panels, electric vehicle, charging stations, landscaping and a lot of the other components that you've mentioned, and I hope that others take note because you made that pencil out, and we want to encourage that. Let's see. And that goes also for just engaging artists, and you mentioned local artists, but also others from outside of the area. I understand it's a private business decision and not in our purview, but I want to recognize that, I think it's important to this community, and it respects the kind of funkiness of the area or the eclectic mix, as you put it in your applicant area. And I'd be supportive of language to augment the CDP findings to clarify that we don't find this to be a luxury hotel, but I'll leave it to a fellow commissioner to specify the language, based on Ms. DeBusk's advice just a few minutes ago. And I'd also be supportive of changing owner-to-owner parentheses to make it plural in the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boss. Hopefully, you've covered everything and we can ditto. Vice Chair Bauckey, go ahead.
I'll start off by dittoing her comments, so we don't have to repeat all that. First off, I'd like to thank the applicant, this is one of the best projects I've seen so far. And in my term on the commission, it really fits the character of the funk zone. I mean, if we could only see something like this in multiple forms down on Garden Street, I'd be very, very happy, but we'll probably not get there. I love how you activated the street, and that's a very important thing, especially in the funk zone, the activation on both sides of the street, not just one side, but both sides. It definitely fits the character, the concept, the feeling, the theme of the funk zone. You have a great use of materials, I think it's good that, good that you've sort of found that balance and transition between what you have on both sides of you, I think that's very good. This is a very complex condominium project, and I hope you have a very good condo lawyer, so, and getting through the Department of Real Estate may be fun, so have fun with that one. And I do appreciate the lead design on this and the forward thinking on it, so kudos to the entire team and kudos to the management and the ownership, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bauckey. Next, we have Commissioner Wiskom, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also support what Commissioner Boss said, I think you handled it very nicely. I think, I'd like to thank the applicants, this is an incredibly creative and exciting project, and it's very suitable for the funk zone. And I was very impressed by all the letters you got from local business owners like Dave Potter, who's, you know, going to be kind of a competitor, but, you know, it's, it's great to see. The architecture is lovely, I think, I think it will do a lot to activate that, that corner, that part of the street. And I appreciate the extra bike parking, given the fact that we are parking-challenged in the funk zone, even though I know we talked about, that report was done when I was the liaison on the downtown parking committee, so I remember that report. And I think we changed some, some signs around to limit to 90-minute parking or something, but that's about all that really got done. You're right, they said there is sufficient parking, it's just, we've got to know where it is. At any rate, and I appreciate the, the all-electric, the sustainability issues you put on it, the permeable pavement. I'm not real happy with no train service for the employees, but I understand that, that's a, that's a wild card at this point, so I get that. And I think that's about all I have to say, other than I think you're on your way to a really, really nice project. So thank you that, and thank you to staff and Ms. Kennedy for doing such a great job, as always.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Next, we have Commissioner DeLucio, please.
Yeah, go back, and I want to just compliment our commissioners that looked at this in 2021, some of them are here today, and the ones, and the former ones. And I also want to compliment the developers for listening, and it's, actually, it's made our job easy today. And I want to thank Commissioner Boss for taking the lead on this, I really appreciate that. And I support all the conditions you want to add about the manager units, the non-luxury hotel, put something in regards to the coastal permit, and also your, your comment about the owners. And also, just a couple of things, this is a great project in terms of infrastructure improvements, sustainability, Title 24, did a great job with that, great outreach to the community, we had like 13 letters or something, all in support of the project. And I like the idea of having the two hotels having distinct architectural or interiors, et cetera, to show there are indeed different hotel entities. And the art program, it's informal, the art program, I haven't heard that before here. I know we, we always put our emphasis on how the buildings are going to look, and we do have great-looking buildings in Santa Barbara, but to incorporate art into it. Where I came from, West Hollywood, that was actually mandatory to do a percent of the value of the building, you had, I think it was 1%, you had to do some kind of art element. Too bad the buildings didn't look better, but we did have, we did have some good, we did have some good art there, so, but I love the way it's informal here, especially in the funk zone. I don't want, wouldn't want to formalize it, but, but I really appreciate that, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Next, we have Commissioner Wardlow, please.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I want to echo my fellow commissioners and thank the applicant, I do feel that this is an extremely exemplary hotel project. I hope that this will be setting the standard for additional hotels that we see in our community. The mixed-use nature of this project is not only compatible with the neighborhood, and it is consistent with the general plan use policy of the lower state neighborhood, state neighborhood. The uses proposed are complementary to the immediate neighborhood and overall funk zone. I'm supportive of the proposed industrial design utilizing a varied approach with extensive landscaping, and that will increase the foliage and greenery of the overall funk zone. I am supportive of the sizable scale of this project and believe that it's consistent with the land use element policies. I think we're all very enthused to see workforce housing as a component of this project with the two units for managers. I commend the applicant strongly for going above and beyond in terms of sustainability and the state standards. I think that this is a great example of how hotels can really lead the way on, you know, electrifying and the sustainable aspects of what can be done in hotel developments. I do believe we all share the Coastal Commission's concerns and desire to see this be an affordable hotel, but I do think that the rationale that was laid out by the applicant is consistent, given our inability to require or restrict the pricing in any way. As an applicant team of local leaders, I think it really shows that you all have done the work in terms of engaging the community, and I find that really important and appreciate the efforts in that. And lastly, I think that, as anyone that frequents the funk zone, we're excited to see you all really incorporate local artists and put an emphasis on encouraging local artists to be a part of this project. So overall, I'm very excited to see this project move forward. I agree with Commissioner Bauckey, this is one of the best hotel projects we've seen as this commission, and I just greatly appreciate all the efforts that you have put into making this not only compatible, but really beneficial to the funk zone community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow. And I just want to double-check, Commissioner Lodge, would you like to add any comments here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Everything's been said. So, I'll just say ditto.
Thank you, and I feel the same way, it's an advantage of going last. But I do want to take a moment, in my own words, to thank the applicant team and the, and the architects for the design. Specifically, I am very, very attracted to the design, the materials you've chosen, I think they're an incredible choice. And I, you know, was really, my focus, my main focus when we were on the site was thinking about looking left and looking right, understanding what materials you're proposing and how they would fit. And I specifically fell in love with this concept of a transitional material. You're neither this and you're neither that, but you're tying them together, and it's exactly what we need in that area. So I just, my hat, my hat goes off to you guys, great, great work on this. I also really appreciate the, the infrastructure improvements, the, the opportunity to take care of a lot of things going on in this area, whether you want to or not, but it's happening as part of the project, those awful poles get to go away, and we can't wait for the neighbor on either side of you to have their turn to put it underground as well and ultimately improve the area as a whole. But thank you for taking that first step and really making that effort, because it sets the precedent for neighbors to come. I also want to mention that as locals, as we're all locals here, we don't tend to go stay in hotels in our own community, but your project has offered amenities that we can all benefit from, that we can go and spend time at the restaurant, it's open to the public, to the wine tasting, even the bodega is going to serve employees, not just tourists and guests to our community. And I think that that needs to be something that we consider for future hotels that have the ability to open their amenities to the public, to the local public as well. So thank you for thinking of everything. One of my colleagues already said it, but I just want to echo that sentiment, it feels like you've come very prepared, you've listened to the comments from the previous hearing, and then you've covered all sorts of things that we may not have even touched on. So thanks for thinking ahead and outside of the box. I will just like to ask, if Commissioner Boss may be willing, it's a little bit of a challenge, but we can help you. You, you've covered so much, and I have to take a moment to acknowledge you, you've done really well today, and I think that you've covered everything that has encompassed and summarized all of the commissioners. Every one of us had a comment, you've summarized it. Can we help you put together a motion? Would you be willing to take this on?
I will, I will do my best.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve the vesting tentative map conditional use permit for each hotel and a coastal development permit, making the findings in the staff report, including the environmental review determinations, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A with the following edits. One, to add the two hotel manager units to the conditions of approval on page 16, number B1. The second edit, to, yeah, thank, I'll take the next easy one, to change where it says owner, to make sure that it's plural with a parentheses and an S. And also to, I don't think this is in the conditions of approval, but the CDP findings to clarify that we do not find this to be a luxury hotel, and that's where I'm going to need some assistance.
Good job.
Good job.
Commissioner Wiskom.
Yeah, I'll jump in here. The, I think, I think we want to say that the commission finds that LCP, our local coastal program policy, 3.2-12 and 3.2-14, as well as Coastal Act 30213, are applicable because this hotel has been, the hotel units have been limited in size, there is a lack of amenities, no spa, no, what were some of the other ones? No meeting room, no what?
Valet.
Valet parking, no meeting rooms, and the unit size is limited, yes?
Interrupt, there is a small spa, so let's not use that word, spa. There's one on the third floor. It's not so-
A small what?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Just to not confuse future-
Okay.
Can we make it into just a statement without all the examples, perhaps?
Yeah, I, Mr. Busk provided examples, I think, and I, so, that's, I think, I think the important thing that we, we want to emphasize here is, first of all, our local coastal program policies and also the Coastal Act, they're the same thing, but at any rate. And, and just, just say that, that the hotel rooms have been restricted in size to a very small size, and there is an absence of amenities associated with luxury hotels.
Much better. Thank you for the assist. Yeah, that was great. And I'm just going to refer quickly to Ms. DeBusk. Did we, meaning, Commissioner Boss, Commissioner Wiskom, did we cover the statement that you made encouraging the language? Okay, very good. So with that, is there-
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I just wanted to wait and say, is there, did we miss anything? It doesn't sound like we missed anything, I'll take Ms., Commissioner Wiskom's second, and are there any, no, there's no thirds. Do we have any discussion on the, on the motion? All right, Ms. Johnson, would you go ahead, please, and take a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson, I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Chair Bonderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. So as always, there is a 10-day calendar appeal period, so hopefully we won't hear anything, but nonetheless, thank you for your application and for being so well-prepared. We all, I'm sure I can speak on behalf of everyone, we look forward to this project being built so we can utilize it as well. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to go ahead and give the, give everyone a 10-minute recess and welcome Ms. Arseniega up to set up for the next presentation. We'll be back at 3:52. 3:02. I do it wrong. PM, and we will begin with item 3B, which is a new item, it's easily called, simple terms, Highway 101. And we have case planner Megan Arseniega here from the city to give us the staff presentation. Ms. Arseniega, the floor is yours. Please go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson, members of the commission and the public.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson, members of the commission and the public. My name is Megan Arseneaga, I'm the project planner, presenting to you the coastal development permit application for improvements to Highway 101. So the improvements you're going to be looking at today require a coastal development permit approval by your commission, including findings and consistency with the coastal land use plan. To orient you on this project's scope and location, it's about a mile and a half segment of Highway 101, starting at the county-city line at Olive Mill Road, so that's our jurisdictional boundary, and then the project follows about a mile and a half north to about the Salinas exit, going northbound Andrea Bird, Andrea Clark Refuge across the way when you're on the southbound. So this project is part of a much larger project. We are the last segment of an 11-mile-long corridor improvement for Highway 101, intended to add high occupancy vehicle lanes or carpool lanes to the 101 from Carpinteria all the way to Santa Barbara. We have the last segment of these, they were broken up essentially through jurisdiction lines, so we have the Carpinteria segment, Summerland, and then two segments, two segments in Summerland, and then Montecito. You may be familiar with, at the jurisdiction line between Montecito and City of Santa Barbara was the Olive Mill Roundabout, that's where this project picks up, and then ends near Salinas Street. Since there are many improvements along this mile and a half stretch, I'm going to walk through kind of that corridor, starting at the county-city line on the right-hand side of the screen. So it's essentially starting with adding a high occupancy vehicle or carpool lane into the main, what we call the main line of the Highway 101. And so that, there'll be a carpool lane on both sides, northbound and southbound. Following north, so it starts at Olive Mill Road and goes up north. On the southbound side, you'll see on this Olive Mill Road exit, when you're heading southbound, there will be sound walls along Spring Street, so as Spring Street connects to Olive Mill Road itself. Beyond that, that's about it for this segment. Moving north, we continue on, there's a second sound wall, you can see at the bottom right of the screen, again on the southbound side, no sound walls on the northbound side. Continuing on, there's some guard rail improvements and concrete barriers identified. Continuing further north, now we're getting to the termination, this is the Hermosillo Road northbound exit, so existing exit, just reconfiguration. A lot of these improvements, beyond just adding the carpool lane, are improving visibility, angles and geometry of ensuring that the main line and off-ramps are really now coming up to code with Caltrans safety standards for visibility, slowing of vehicles, maneuvering, all those things. So there haven't been improvements to this section of highway in quite some time. This project improves those elements as well. So we see some improvements to the Hermosillo off-ramp, including a crosswalk across Coast Village Road that will be installed, and then additional visibility ensured. Moving north, there's some more guard railing in blue, and then we have the off-ramp for Cabrillo now becoming a right-hand exit. So currently, we have our Cabrillo left-hand exit, as you go towards the zoo, that's what we're all familiar with. This is also a safety standard of Caltrans to make sure that we have all right-hand exits and on-ramps, so it'd be reconfiguring that to be a right-hand exit, which requires a whole reconfiguration of the interchange at Hot Springs and Cabrillo, because we have not only the northbound left exit, but then we also have left exits when we're going southbound as well. So the intent of the project is to bring, reconfigure that interchange, so we have a northbound right-hand exit to Cabrillo, and as you exit, you would come around and then go over to the existing Hot Springs Roundabout that connects to Coast Village Road. Also, if you were to navigate left or going back on northbound, we have this new teardrop roundabout. We're calling it a teardrop to distinguish it from the existing Hot Springs Roundabout, but that helps navigate and keep the line of sight and safety elements and clearances required for this new reconfiguration. So this teardrop roundabout then creates a new underpass situation. Right now, these two bridge elements are separated. This project would bring those two bridge elements closer together. There is a little bit of a relief and break between the bridges, but overall, they're brought much closer together than they are now. And then the underpass continues, and you can see also, this project would create a new southbound on-ramp at Cabrillo that was previously closed with the earlier highway improvement. So that brings open the highway southbound off-ramp when you're coming from. So down here would be the cemetery, and you can come in, and then there's actually a southbound on-ramp versus people going all the way down through Coast Village Road. So it relieves, allows that new access. To that point, coming up, the last part of the project here is the termination towards Salinas Street. So beyond that interchange, there are some walls and guardrails ending kind of close to the municipal tennis courts, is about where the project terminates on this side, and then the Bird Refuge down below. Also down below, you can see, southbound, you have the closure of the Los Potos Way southbound off-ramp. So this project would close off that. It's currently undersized and doesn't meet any safety requirements. Instead, there would be a new southbound off-ramp as part of the reconfiguration of that interchange. I want to start and touch on environmental review, because this is a unique project that spans multiple jurisdictions. The lead agency for the project is Caltrans, because we went from Carpinteria to Santa Barbara. So they are the lead agency, the City of Santa Barbara is the responsible agency. There was an EIR prepared for the project back in 2014 that covered the entire HOV lanes project, all from Carpinteria to Santa Barbara. So that being said, at the time of the EIR, it's a high-level analysis, not every detail is known or studied as part of that EIR. Really, those details are fleshed out and refined during the application process. So as each element came online, and Caltrans and SB CAG applied through Carpinteria, they had their details finalized similarly. Now that the application is in, for us, we have more project-specific details. So an addendum was prepared to address the project-specific details that we now have. Also, as part of the environmental review and that EIR, is that there were Class 1 impacts identified. And Class 1 impacts are essentially saying that there's mitigation that might help reduce an impact, but it's not enough to be less than significant. So there's still a remaining significant impact even with mitigation. So in order to move forward from that point, the city or a responsible agency must make a statement of overriding considerations, which essentially acknowledges that the impacts are not entirely reduced, but the project benefits outweigh the specific impacts. The Class 1 impacts that we have for our segment in this project were revolved around visual impacts and traffic impacts. There are mitigation measures for both of these impact areas, so for visual, there are requirements for landscaping, tree removals, material selection. And for traffic, there's requirements for a traffic management plan, and then also very specific intersection improvements. So although we have mitigation measures for both of those impact areas, there is still an impact that remains that can't be, is not less than significant, so that's where the statement overriding considerations is required as part of your action today. There are other issue areas that were less prominent in the analysis that were Class 2 and Class 3 impacts. Those also have mitigation measures that were introduced into the EIR and also included as part of the mitigation monitoring plan. Very specifically towards the intersection improvements required by the EIR to address the traffic concerns, the EIR identified that adding this additional traffic to the highway, specifically from this HOV lane, would impact local intersections. And so they studied 108 intersections within the length of the entire corridor area, so there were intersections within Carpinteria, Montecito, Summerland, and also similarly Santa Barbara that were going to be impacted. And by impacted, what was analyzed was specifically, there would be a delay of, an increased delay at these specific intersections for traffic to get through. And the three intersections that relate to our area are the Milpis southbound off-ramp, Olive Mill, Coast Village Road, and Cabrillo and Los Potos Road. And the mitigation measures were clear that these improvements, or intersection improvements, need to be completed in advance of the highway mainline project. And that's intentional, because once the mainline improvements are done, we're already going to have that traffic. So there is a timing component identified, and the intent is that these are prepared first. So as you're familiar, the Milpis off-ramps have been done and constructed. There are some minor improvements still that will be finished up regarding that mitigation project. The Olive Mill Road, Coast Village Road intersection was a roundabout improvement. You guys have seen that project, it was approved and is currently under construction and nearing completion. And then the last one is the Cabrillo Boulevard-Los Potos intersection. So nearing this project is the termination of Los Potos as it meets Cabrillo with the cemetery. And that intersection also was reviewed and approved by your planning commission in 2018 as a roundabout to improve the intersection at that location. So just revisiting those, you may be familiar with the Hot Springs, I'm sorry, not Hot Springs, the Olive Mill Roundabout, that's currently in construction and nearing completion. And then here's the Los Potos Roundabout that was approved in 2018. And you can see, so also as part of this Los Potos Roundabout, there was an element, kind of a leg, if you will, that goes under the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge, so this is a bridge spanning that road. And this project encompass adding or widening that road base, replacing the bridge, and allowing pedestrian improvements. So this project was done altogether, has a very long name of the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge Replacement and Pedestrian Improvements on East Cabrillo Boulevard. So I think it wins for longest title. Here's an image that kind of puts that in perspective on aerial view. So we have Los Potos Way, which is part of where the southbound off-ramp will be terminated at the end of that street, the street remains, but there are improvements as part of this project that lead into the roundabout, reconfiguring, allowing site distances, safer crossings, pedestrian improvements, multi-use path, bike lanes, and then also replacement of the railroad bridge itself. So this project is the Los Potos project approved in 2018, it terminates right here beyond the UPRR Bridge. And just to the north of it are the two existing bridges, highway bridges, that are where our project picks up. So here's a simulation to kind of orient you on that, the three bridges, if you will. So it's kind of turned around, if you can notice, on the upper right is the cemetery, so we're looking toward, you know, ocean is over to our right. This is the existing UPRR Bridge, and it's kind of pinch point, and then this would be the new mainline pulling those two highway bridges together, and the interchange, the new configuration on the left. It doesn't have the teardrop that we're familiar with in the plans, these are preliminary simulations that haven't been updated, but give you the sense of how those three components kind of play into each other. And then on the right, you can see the change of, with the Los Potos project, would be widening the bridge element underneath the railroad bridge. So why does this matter? It makes sense, it's important for a number of reasons, not just, well, mainly also for vehicle access, but also for pedestrian access, for bike access, for coastal access, just all the multimodal access points. Our policies at the city really point to completing and enhancing connections to our coastal areas. And as we all know, this is a very important coastal resource area, we have the Bird Refuge connection to East Cabrillo Boulevard, the zoo, and the waterfront. And we have the coast bike route that continues down from East Cabrillo Boulevard and connects all the way to Coast Village Road. And with those existing pinch points under the bridges, it creates a dangerous situation for pedestrians, cyclists, and cars alike. So these improvements are important to enhance those access areas, and really complete the puzzle taking over from the Los Potos project. So on the bottom right, the solid lines are the Los Potos project that have already been approved and are pending construction, and then the dashed lines, the blue and red, are the continuation for this project to really fill in that last puzzle piece in terms of coastal access. There's a zoomed-out view. And then last, we want to touch on the Los Potos southbound off-ramp itself. So as we talked about, this project specifically closes that off-ramp. And abandonment of the road underneath and the, and treatment of the bridge is a separate project. There's already been an application that was submitted in March 2021, it's currently under review, hasn't been approved yet, it still needs, so it's a coastal development permit application and environmental review. So there's kind of the initial submittal of changing the, closing off the off-ramp, and then changing this into a cul-de-sac at the end of Los Potos Way. Here's kind of a visual simulation that came with that permit application. So going back to your role today, so the planning commission is asked to make findings for approval of the project, which include environmental findings. So first, determine that the EIR package is complete and adequate, and includes our disclosure and location requirements. Also, a finding stating that the project benefits outweigh the impacts that remain in our statement of overriding considerations. And then adopting the monitoring and reporting program that's proposed. And then as, for the coastal development permit, your commission is charged with making the findings that the project is consistent with coastal policies and coastal zoning code. Which brings us to policy consistency, and I want to touch on this because it's important to our community. Back in 1994, the city, in anticipation of Caltrans coming, continuing widening through our jurisdiction, took a strong pause and made sure to update our local coastal plan very specifically to put in strong protection of, to protect our scenic character in this stretch of Highway 101. And along with that, we adopted specific design guidelines that go hand-in-hand with those policies. Those policies are discussed in detail, it's part of the staff report, and we've kind of touched on a few of them. They focus on things like making sure that whenever we have highway improvements, that those improvements are first and foremost safe and efficient facilities, that they look at minimizing vehicles' miles traveled, that they really look to preserve the scenic character of Santa Barbara, and preserve and enhance coastal access where feasible, that there's opportunity for art implementation, and that there's consideration of transportation disruptions as highway projects always impact traffic circulation in our local area. So the project was reviewed very intentionally with these items in mind. The applicant worked with staff and our working group to make sure that the geometry and sightlines, and worked with transportation staff to make sure that we had efficient facilities, made sure that we have pedestrian accommodations in our sidewalks and the roundabouts. There's effort to include pedestrian access and bike lanes. There's a coordination with Amtrak to make sure that we have the lane and the train as proposed as part of the Highway 101 in motion study that encourages multimodal transportation and consistent with our policies. The scenic character was very much taken seriously as part of the design review group, making sure that the plant materials and material palette is consistent with the Santa Barbara materials, that we're enhancing coastal access. There was a consideration for art, so the applicant team identified areas where art could be accommodated as part of the design. Currently, no art elements are proposed, because there wasn't support for that at the design review at this time, but there is still that opportunity there. And then they have addressed a number of the coordination concerns and transportation disruptions from both during construction as part of their traffic management plan. So with all those items in mind, staff does believe the project is consistent with our well-intentioned local coastal policies that really protect our community and have our interests in mind for this section of highway. So staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project and make the findings as outlined in Section 10 of the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval that are also provided in your packet as Exhibit A. Before I conclude, I just wanted to identify that we have city representatives with us to speak to some of the elements that were reviewed. So we have David Black representing the working group and ABR Design Review with us. He'll add a statement once I close. He'll add a statement once I close. And then transportation is represented by both Jessica Grant and Derek Bailey. And then we have Julia Peugeot here for our environmental review. That concludes staff's presentation, but if we can have Mr. Black take a second to to summarize his, the working group comments.
Good afternoon. My name is David Black. So I am currently a member of the ABR and I am a landscape architect by training. So that's kind of the kind of input that I provided during the working group reviews. Sort of looking back at at the, my calendar, I realize that I think the first meeting that I attended as far as part of the working group, and this working group included a representative of HLC and ABR, of course, that Richard Six was an architect on the ABR. He was another member, but I'm here to speak on their behalf. So but the first meeting that I attended went back to March of 2021. So and there are probably a half a dozen meetings that we, where we met with the consultant team. And and our purpose really was to provide input relative to evaluating the aesthetic qualities of of all the proposed improvements. And there's a laundry list of of elements that we looked at, and I'll just go through them quickly. Obviously, plant pilot and and the planting layout was was important to everyone, but particularly to me as a landscape architect. But other elements that we looked at were retaining walls in terms of colors and textures, and you'll see all this in the consultant presentation today. But median barriers and planters, bridge treatments in details, sound walls, railings, overhead signage, lighting and and slope treatment. So these are all elements that we looked at on a regular basis during the the course of those meetings. And then as far as ABR is concerned, in November of last year, 2022, the project was brought before ABR for a concept review. And and I have to say that, you know, they, we came away with, you know, quite a, quite a number of positive comments. There are a few little items, details that would be addressed in the the PDA and final design, but that's a little bit down the road. But so, you know, we had a very positive attitude towards the project and and look forward to its development in the future. And if you have any comments or questions relative to my participation in ABR, I'd be happy to answer those. Seeing none.
Are there any questions at this time? Please, Commissioner Wiskel.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. One of my questions was going to be in our conditions of approval. There's language, it's on page three and four of 28 and 22 to 23 of 324. It talks about the concrete barriers having aesthetic treatment, the sound walls, the same, built structures, architecturally treated, off-ramp, off-ramp something, I can't even read my own writing, but these are all subjective terms. So when when you met with your committee, you basically did all these, these aesthetic terms have been addressed in terms of what's going to be used on the project. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that we have identified those issues and and I think we we might have made some requests of the consultant team in terms of maybe looking at it a different way, you know, just like we would typically do. Just, I think we had, I'm speaking of ABR now, but also I think when we had the these working group meetings, there were some items relative to what you were discussing. And we did make, we did make some comments. Now, whether or not those were addressed specifically, you'll you'll see when 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 the presentation is made, I think. But but yeah, they were addressed.
Oh, okay. So so this, you think that in our conditions of approval, that this subjectivity by, in relation to the terms used aesthetically pleasing and whatever the terms architecturally treated, they've been addressed then, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much for that.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskel. Do we have any other questions before before we lose Mr. Black? Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thanks.
And I would, okay, that's it. So at this point, I will turn to Ms. Johnson for public comment.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to-
There's, wait, there's, is there an applicant?
There is.
Oh, that's what I was just asking you, and you said, no, that's it.
I thought you were-
I know, I, I was, that's why I, I even double checked, and you're like, no, that's it. I'm like, really?
I meant John Steph.
All right, public commenters will have to wait. Please excuse my misunderstanding. There's a bit of a distance between us. Of course, we have the applicant presenting next, so please excuse my, my mix-up. I, I, as usual, you have 15 minutes and you have a timer on your screen, but if you need to go a little bit longer or whatnot, please just let me know.
Okay, we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been, well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. Good afternoon, Chair Bonderson and planning commissioners. It's good to see you all again from our site visit the other day. So my name is Fred Luna. I'm with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And so we're partners with Caltrans on this Highway 101 project. We'll just use the short-term Highway 101 project. And but essentially, as you've seen, it's a project that has a long history. And currently, the the approach has been Highway 101 from Carpinteria, Santa Barbara. So the objective of the longer project is to build 11 miles of carpool lanes and in conjunction with our multimodal plan. And we'll get into that in a second as part of the project. Today, you know, we, to get this project done, we have a, we have a great team. And so we have some of our team members here from SB CAG. We also have Caltrans, who's the owner-operator of the freeway. Mark Thomason Company, they're the lead consultant for the design and landscape architecture, GPA, and Ayers and Associates. So we're all here as resources to answer any questions the commission has. I think we're at a unique opportunity here to, as Megan indicated in one of the slides, to really look at the last segment of Highway 101. When we were out on our field visit, we saw that there was a lot of construction going on, a lot of it's done. And so we're, we're trying to get the rest of it completed. In regards of specific roles on this project, SB CAG is the implementation lead. So we're the lead for design and right-of-way, and Caltrans is the CDP applicant. Caltrans does provide the oversight for this, and they'll lead the construction. And so we've been using a unique delivery method called Construction Manager, General Contractor, where we have a contractor at our side to help answer questions on the constructibility of the project. And that's proven to be very valuable as we're moving through that to address those key construction issues and making sure that all the phases that are under construction at the same time get done in a cooperative manner. Go to the next slide. So you've seen this slide before. I think my my take on this slide, Megan touched on it in a certain way, is that there was an initial plan to build the project in five segments and so across three jurisdictions, and we're accomplishing that. Segment A in Carpinteria is is complete. And then Segment C, what you see in Summerland there, maybe I'll just highlight it, there. That one will be completed in about a month. And then Segment B will be completed in about another year. And then now we're starting construction in the Montecito segment, and we just recently got funding to start work in the Santa Barbara segment. And so I'll be touching on that in just a second. All three of those projects in the first seven miles were completed with funding that was granted in 2018. So if there's any questions about that, future funding opportunities, I'd be happy to answer that in Q and A. Go to the next slide. So I think this slide really tells a good story about how we're approaching the current segment in the city of Santa Barbara. And so you'll use, you'll hear our team use the term Segment 4E or the Santa Barbara segment interchangeably. It really refers to the same project from Olive Mill north to Sycamore Creek. And the primary components in this project are new peak hour carpool lanes, of course, that's the kind of the primary foundation, adding the third lane, and then ramp improvements at Spring Street. So you can see right here, Spring Street, Olive Mill. There's also sound walls in in this area. There's also new ramp improvements at Hermosillo. And these are all in Segment, what we call in Segment 4E South. So that was, that was the component that was recently funded in June. The rest of the project also includes a major reconstruction, and this is where we'll spend quite a bit of time talking about some of the improvements at the Cabrillo interchange. I think one of the the key things here is, Megan talked about that, teardrop roundabout, there's going to be a new Cabrillo northbound off-ramp, and then we're restoring that Cabrillo southbound ramp that was removed about 15 years ago with the Phase 1 project. So those, it's, it's really an exciting time. We're getting rid of those left-hand ramps. I shouldn't forget that. That's a key foundation component that we talked about at the site visit, and I think we have some good renderings that show you how that work will be done. Next slide. Okay, so this gives you a sense of, I'm going to touch on here, this is the project that was funded in June. And so I'm going to describe the improvements that we're seeing here from the Olive Mill. So Olive Mill Road and the overcrossing that we're seeing here to orient the commission, we're looking north. And so we're going to be adding a new HOV lane in each direction. And then here's that median that I think there were some questions about that's been being added in the center. So new landscaping on the exterior. And this was a foundational principle in the environmental document about enhancing landscaping on the exterior versus versus the interior, because we were able to build a more robust landscape corridor with exterior landscaping. Other improvements that you may not see as well is in the southbound off-ramp is in this direction at at Spring Road. And then there's those sound walls that were part of the map in this, hidden for the most part from the freeway by new vegetation. That will be the plan. I think one of the most important features of the project is the fact that the new paving is, it's not just adding one lane, it's really reconstructing three lanes with new concrete pavement. And the benefits of that that we get is improved sound attenuation, improved rideability, and it's long-term, 40-year pavement. Normally, you would have to go, if you did an asphalt covering, maybe within the next seven years, and have to go repave it. So it reduces the ability to have to maintain that over time as well. So we have other team members that are going to speak to the other components of the project. So I'm going to hand it over to Christine Anderson at this point.
Thank you and good afternoon. I'm Christine Anderson. I'm Mark Thomas, with, I'm not Mark Thomas, I am with Mark Thomas, and I'm the lead landscape architect for this project. And I'm happy to be here today to bring you this, this work. I just wanted to orient you a little bit on this graphic before I get completely started. It's the green button, correct? So I understand you took a site visit on Tuesday, and I believe you stood right about in this location. So I wanted to kind of like orient you at first to help you, help you get a feel for what this, what this graphic means. From the field walk, you know that the Cabrillo interchange will be reconstructed to the center of everything else. This eliminates that left-hand off-ramp, left-hand off-ramps that Fred talked about. It will also replace it with right-hand off-ramps. This configuration increases bike and ped safety on local roads. It also allows for the HOV lane, that high occupancy vehicle lane that Fred and and Megan discussed. The reconstruction of bridges and Highway 1, Highway 101 improvements also helps us to retain existing trees along the northbound off-ramp, nor, I'm sorry, northbound on-ramp along here and Old Coast Highway, as well as along the freeway to the south. So between Olive Mill and the Cabrillo interchange, that helps us to to retain existing trees to the maximum extent possible. It also allows, this particular configuration with the bridges being centered this way also allows us a greater landscape area to the north of the freeway and and allows us to soften the built elements of the interchange itself. It also creates a canvas for our landscape design approach to plant skyline trees, additional skyline trees, that will be removed as part of the the bridge relocation. If you could go to the next slide. So this view is from the Hot Springs Roundabout, looking towards the the teardrop roundabout that was talked about earlier, and the northbound on-ramp and new Cabrillo, Cabrillo Roundabout. This project will include local road improvements that improve local functionality for, that's critical to make for bike and ped access with the parallel projects that Megan spoke about before. Aesthetically, the local road improvements allow us to fit the project within the local context of Santa Barbara, using lighting, plant materials, hardscape features, and skyline trees that connect the Montecito segment to the south, to this segment in Santa Barbara. And just really quickly, I wanted to say that we are very well aware, because of our process with the design review team, working group, as well as the ABR, that there are several elements that the city would like to see, including the streetlight features and pedestrian walkway, walkway fixtures that we are, were selected for the site. So this view is from that, is from that new teardrop roundabout that was discussed earlier, and shows that we've simplified the bridge, bridge architecture to match the local context. As part of the, as part of the design review team process and the working group that we had, we've used the context of the architectural components of the Milpus and State Street areas to inform our aesthetic design, and also allows the uses, use of natural materials like sandstone and boulders that were part of the Los Patos and Hot Springs roundabouts. And plant material has been chosen to be drought tolerant and hardy for maintenance. We're trying to use natives to the maximum extent possible as well, but oftentimes we amplify that with drought tolerant plant material that's suitable for this environment. We did really focus on the use of skyline trees, as you can see, and that's a unique feature of this, where we're using oaks, sycamores, palm trees, and Monterey cypress planted in a variety of container sizes, with the largest sizes, the largest container sizes in areas where they are most visible from local roads. And it is, it is unique to this project as well, that we are using almost exclusively 24-inch box oak trees to reach our mitigation requirements. If you could go to the next slide. And you've seen this slide already. So just, just to make sure that you understand too, that the dashed lines represent the portion of work that would be constructed with our project. But as you heard from the staff presentation, this project will finalize needed improvements to close gaps in pedestrian and bike circulation. An approval of this project will connect existing multi-use pathways, the California Coastal Trail, coastal access facilities, and bike lanes and sidewalks south of the freeway, with the approved Los Potos and UPRR undercrossing parallel projects to the north of the interchange. So I'm going to let Dave Emerson speak now from Caltrans.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Dave Emerson. I'm a project manager with Caltrans. I've been fortunate to be the project manager on segments A, C, and now 4E, which is wonderful because we're at the ending point, and it's a great project, as I'm hoping you're recognizing yourself. As a result of our field meeting on Tuesday, it seemed like a slide like this, a series like this might be helpful to explain in, just in brief graphics, what the project is actually doing and how we're going to construct it. So to orient yourself, this is the same slide that Megan presented a few minutes ago with the cemetery in the distance, looking towards the south. We're approximately on top of the existing golf course, looking at Cabrillo and Hot Springs. So you see on the right, the UPRR railroad tracks, and there's the three southbound lanes. That, those, that third lane was added between 2008 and 2012. We made modifications to that structure so that we could accommodate all three lanes. The existing barriers that were on there were much wider, so by removing them and replacing them with a modern version, we were able to squeeze a third lane on that, which helped improve operations at the time. Next, you'll see the two left-hand off-ramps, which meet at a signalized intersection at Cabrillo. And then to the left of that is the two northbound lanes. So- And then to the left of that is the two northbound lanes. So we've addressed it briefly today, but we are going to be removing the left-hand off-ramp and on-ramp because we are, there's not enough room to fit on and off ramps in between the two freeways. And there's not, between the northbound and southbound, that is. And there's not enough room between UP and the freeway to add those lanes on the exterior there. So we really need to move those bridges closer together to make this into a more traditional diamond-style interchange, which meets driver expectation. One of the main reasons we don't do this type of left-hand ramp anymore is because that's putting people onto a high-speed facility in the number-one lane. So that's where traffic is traveling its fastest. People who have driver expectation, they want to exit the freeway. If they don't know the area very well, they're going to be in that right side lane and have to make a series of maneuvers to get to the left. That will have an effect on the flow of traffic and reduce the operations. As well, we don't want folks to get onto the freeway in an existing HOV lane, which they don't have the legal right to be in. So for those reasons, we're not pursuing any left-hand ramps anymore. There wasn't, we did look at it pretty closely, and there was no savings in terms of cost or schedule or operations. So it was dropped quickly, and they do not show up as an alternative in the EIR. Oh, I'm sorry, I just have a couple more minutes, and I'll be done, if that's acceptable. Thank you. Okay, next slide. So this is how our stage construction is going to take place. As Fred indicated, we have a contractor on board already, providing input to us and telling us, or giving us advice and input on how things can be constructed, the various and approximate timelines to construct each element. So we're able to plan this well in advance. Now, some of the details on the slide are not 100% accurate up to date, but the concept remains valid and the same. So what we'll be doing first is building this interchange in a two-stage concept, leaving the traffic on the exterior lanes and building the two new bridges and the two new lanes on the inside. And so that will be stage one. And then after that's completed, we'll be moving traffic to the inside and then building the ramps on the exterior, as well as reconstructing some portions of Cabrillo Boulevard. It's also important to note, on that previous slide, we are closing those two off-ramps in the median. So traffic will be using southbound, traffic will be using Los Patos and using that as an exit. The roundabout that's being installed in the next few months is going to be very helpful. And the operations of that, that's going to be instrumental in making traffic flow well through the area. And then the northbound exit will be at Hermosillo. So this slide is, again, the remaining work that needs to be done in stage two. The next slide's going to zoom in to the southbound on-ramp. So here we see the freeway and its new southbound configuration. The existing location is probably where the viewer is of this slide. So the freeway moves over. Those are kind of an indication of what sort of aesthetic treatments we will be utilizing. The retaining wall on the right is there to support the railroad and its facility. So the railroad bridge is slightly off the screen, but there'll be improvements to that one, and it's significantly wider, and allows all these pedestrian elements to continue through and provide continuity to the coast. And then the last slide is the finished product, which you've seen as well. And I think members of the team have already commented that one of the benefits of this slide is it does move the freeway facility close together and allows that landscape area to be consolidated into more usable, larger spaces, which provides a better visual quality. So with that, I'll hand it over to Fred to wrap up.
Yeah, and I understand we're over time, but we just got two quick slides. I think it's important for the commission to know what the benefits are. So we've talked a little bit about the what of the project and the how we're going to build it, but this is kind of the why and what we get out of the project. And so it's important to know that it's not just one and a half miles of an HOV line. It's part of a larger system and a larger multimodal corridor approach that SBK and Caltrans are looking at. So that's really the sense that we're getting there. Dave mentioned the removal of left-hand ramps. It's really a safety improvement, and there's a number of other safety features in the project. Then we have enhancements. We showed the graphic of ped and bike connections, so that's important. It's also an important policy of the funding that we seek for this project is that they want to see ped and bike connections improved. They want to see multimodal options. Christine mentioned the large trees and the emphasis on the trees and how we worked with the design review team. Mr. Black was here to testify to that and how we've accommodated that in our design. And then recycle water, we have that in our plans. We also have a number of other recycle options. We recycle material, we recycle concrete. So there's a number of other recycling efforts that we have on the project. Next slide. And then lastly, we thought it was important for you to know, if your commission would improve the permit today, we're going to embark on what this means to start construction. And this is our outreach component that's proven successful in other areas of the corridor. We have a number of tools in our toolkit that we use, including public meetings. And we've been very successful with that. Construction updates, so if you're not already a subscriber, there are bi-weekly regular construction updates in the corridor that talk about the ongoing construction, but even pre-construction activities. We work with local media, we prepare overview guides. There's an example of that on this slide of the last one we prepared. That goes to a broad section of the community, gets mailed to them, and it has details on the construction and the efforts that we're doing in the community. And that's all culminated and housed in our repository of sbroads.com. So we have a hotline there, we have the website. It's maintained and updated. It has the construction updates. It also has information on each of the main 101 projects and the parallel projects. So we thought that was important for you to know, just as we move forward towards construction on these projects. And I'll conclude our applicant presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Luna. And I'm glad we could give you a little bit more time to complete the presentation. I think it's pretty important. So next, we will officially go to public comment. Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone in the room or remote?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item, you can fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room and turn it into staff. I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand, and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, but we did receive written correspondence from Strong Town Santa Barbara, which was distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bonderson.
Thank you so much. So now we'll move on to the question period, and I will open up the floor to my colleagues. Who would like to go first? Vice Chair Bauckey, please.
Just get into it.
Jump right in.
Couple of questions for staff. There's references as to commuter train service in the staff report. Could you give us an update as to that, or maybe the applicant would give us an update? Because I understand part of this is a multimodal situation, and that's been changing, and there may be new news on that, too.
Through the chair, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Aaron Bonfilio for SB CAG. I'm the director of rail and transit programs. Presently, as I believe was discussed during the prior item, SB CAG and its partners in Ventura County, the Ventura County Transportation Commission are working together to establish and to re-implement what was effectively a morning and afternoon train service. Presently, there is an afternoon train operated by LoSan or the Surfliner Amtrak Train Service that operates today. We are hopeful in working toward an agreement with MetroLink and LoSan. That's the rail agency in Southern California, the Southern California Rail Authority, MetroLink, with a partnership to have them supply a morning train that would operate in the corridor in partnership with LoSan in the afternoon. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
You answered my question. Thank you. Steph, one of the questions I had was just sort of what are jurisdictional physical areas? The staff report says something like 9,000 square feet. Wasn't a whole lot. And I was just trying to, could you walk through how, you know, what's in that 9,000 square feet area, so we understand what are? Because I'm sort of used to Caltrans and other parties just doing what they want to do within the boundaries and not having such a collaborative effort that we're seeing today.
Certainly. And if you give me just a second, we have a graphic that's part of your staff report package. That's the...
Which one?
Part of the freeway maintenance agreement. Here we go. So jurisdiction lines will change as part of the project, so, because the infrastructure itself is changing, and that changes the terms of maintenance and ownership. So it doesn't happen often, but it does here because we have the new infrastructure realignment of that interchange. Otherwise, further south, I believe the jurisdiction lines remain the same. This is the changed component. You can see the shaded, so this is the current configuration, I'll note. So on the top of the orange line is Caltrans's jurisdiction. So this is the highway infrastructure, and then below it is the city's jurisdiction. So this is the changeover from where Caltrans facilities and maintenance ends and where the city's local streets, local maintenance begins. And so this is the current configuration, and then with the project that would be realigned. And that includes, you know, maintenance of signage and landscaping, irrigation, et cetera. This is established in a mechanism called a freeway maintenance agreement. That's a process that formalizes this maintenance and jurisdiction boundary after project approvals. This is a draft exhibit for it, and we have a draft freeway maintenance agreement that allowed staff, including park staff and public works staff, to have a handle on what the change in maintenance area would look like. So as you noticed, there was a change, I think it's 750 square feet, if I recall correctly. It's not much in the area that the city is now having slightly more area of maintenance than we currently have. That has been vetted with our city staff and public works and parks, and we can accommodate that additional maintenance area. It does require some additional funding per year to be allocated for that additional square footage, because it's based off of square footage. And we have Derek Bailey here from Public Works to speak to that also if we need. But essentially, that's the changeover, if that answers your question?
Yeah, thank you. Because there were many, many drawings in this application package, and trying to figure out which one actually answered that question. I honestly couldn't find which one it did. So thank you on that. Question as to funding status. Mr. Luna, are you the right person to, what is the situation with funding? I understand part of it is funded, some of it is, you've got grants or applications for additional funding. What do we know we're going to get built with the money we have? What's going to be built with the money we're asking for?
So Commissioner Balcony, Chair Bonderson, I want to start by saying, so Fred, Luna can fill us in in the details. That is, the role of SB CAG is to work on those fundings. But I do want to orient the planning commission so we leave our focus. All projects require funding, right? And many don't require construction funding separate from permit funding. So that's not unusual to this project. The difference is, it's more similar to city infrastructure projects where funds are generally provided for by grant programs, and that has certain criteria associated with it and requirements for them to meet it. And part of that is because it is a large project, there are several phases to it. And that's not unusual of large infrastructure improvements either, that they're phased out in segments and therefore funded in those segments. The benefit of this project, and Fred can speak to this, is that because we are the last of those segments, there's actually a lot of support for the funding of the final segment. So generally, grant funds are looking for assurance that this is a shovel-ready project. So we do have the benefit of that in this term. So I wanted to just address that funding isn't generally the concern of the city. It's usually, it's on the applicant, and in this case, SB CAG in combination with Caltrans. It's on them to, they've agreed to the mitigation measures that were identified in the EIR. At the time, the EIR was certified, and those components were known, and those are part of the components that have always been planned. So it is their role to have to make sure that all those mitigation elements and parallel projects align and that funding is secured and construction is completed prior to the mainline improvements. And with that, I'll leave it to Fred.
Okay. I think Megan did a great job in introducing that. And I appreciate the question because it's always a challenging one, as we talk about the 101 project broken up into segments, we have parallel projects. And I think just to boil it down real quickly is, we're almost there. You know, we're, in June, we were just awarded $132 million to finish the last portion of the Montecito segment and then half of the Santa Barbara segment. And we really broke it up into these sub-p packages in order to make it more attractive for statewide funding opportunities, because there's a limited amount of resources statewide, highly competitive. And so we were able to create a package that was attractive, that included a lot of local improvements as well. So what's remaining, to answer your question, is that that portion that we called 4E North, the Cabrillo segment. And so we're going to take the same approach that we've done SBK and Caltrans going forward. We're already working on our application. And as Megan indicated, we're moving forward with local money to get those constructions ready, so that when the funding is awarded, that we'll be ready to start construction. And that'll include local improvements as well, like the Cabrillo Railroad Bridge. That's part of the entire package that we've been seeking funding for, and some other improvements within the city to balance out that multimodal approach. And I'm happy to answer any more specific questions, but that's generally been our approach, and it's been successful.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. One more question, which is something, sort of an elephant in the room question, which the general public will be asking, surely, is, you know, I lived over that area town back in 2008 and such. And the question I think the public will ask is, why weren't we doing these improvements then, knowing that someday you're going to get there versus the amount of money that the taxpayer paid to do all those improvements in that area? And now we're wrapping some of it up. So if you could elaborate as to why, because I think the general public doesn't quite understand how the funding and government and all this works, and they'll be asking. So I figured I'd give you an opportunity to answer that question.
Well, so I've been fortunate, or unfortunate enough to be around, long enough to know that that then could mean 10 years, it could mean 20 years. But essentially, you know, a lot of people look at the history going back to, there was a plan to widen 101, even before there was the problem that there is today some time ago. We were just ready at the time. The community wasn't ready for what was proposed at that time in 1993, I believe it was. And so, but what came out of that, I think, was something more balanced, an approach that included multi-modes, included the lane and the train. There was a study done on that. And so our approach has been that we're funding each of those as separate components. And so that's really, you know, a train project is really different than a highway project is different than a local street project. But they're all part of the solution that we're trying to achieve. And so I think we have the plan in place. We were one of the first regions that had that kind of multimodal corridor approach, and it's really been what's been adopted statewide as the hallmark for getting this funding that we're receiving, so.
Thank you for your answer. I'm done. Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner Whiskin, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for all being here today to answer our questions. I want to go back to the Cabrillo Union Pacific Railroad Bridge. I'm a little bit confused about that. It's part of Phase 2, right? So you're seeking funding for it, and it will, it will, it will need to be done as part of Phase 2. Is that correct? You will have to get funding for it.
Commissioner Whiskin, through the chair. We're just going to bring up a graphic real quick. Yes. Perfect. Great. So when we talk about Phase 1, Phase 2, as it looks in the staff report, it is part of a separate project, one of the mitigation parallel projects to the 101 widening project. And so this is the project, Phase 1 and Phase 2 are actually defined as one project that has that insanely long title that was approved by planning commission back in 2018.
Right, I remember that, yes.
So, but of course, with the funding constraints and everything, that project had to be broken up as well. So the Phase 1, and there's actually a community workshop tonight for the construction phase to build the Cabrillo Los Patos Roundabout that's coming up in a couple of months. Phase 2 is, again, still part of that same project. But that's what we're, that's part of the, again, mitigation that we have in the record for the 101 HOV widening project, just to make sure that that gets built. Because all of these pieces, that Phase 1, Phase 2, and the Highway 101, they're all integral to the circulation of... to the circulation of our local and regional network from, both from a walking, biking, and vehicular perspective.
Okay, so my my question is still, in Phase Two, the the replacement of the Cabrillo Railway Bridge will need to be part of the project. Is that correct? Will need to be funded?
That's correct, that, yes. And that's what the applicant team is working hard on is for getting funding.
So it's not not like a appendage of of the Phase Two project. It is legally part of the project. And you have a memorandum, SB CAG has a memorandum of understanding with Union Pacific that that this bridge can be replaced. And I know it's it's contingent upon the Los Potos Bridge or whatever.
It's, yeah, the memorandum of understanding is with the the city of Santa Barbara for execution of these. And and then as part of the the major funding source for the freeway project to date has been the Senate Bill One. So as as Mr. Luna referenced, we have funding right now for the 4E South. Then there's the trying to get funding for the 4E North.
Yes.
With that package will be part of that Phase Two that you see on the screen.
Okay, okay. So it's, it, that was, there's just a lot of confusion about the bridge because I know Union Pacific, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't excavate around it and try to build infrastructure for pedestrians and bikes around it. But when all is said and done on Phase Two, it will be, we will have good clearance underneath a railroad bridge for pedestrians and bicyclists and it will be safe.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's really what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you for that. And the, the, the Phase Two is is also like all other parts of these projects, the, the, I'm going to call them appendages to these projects, have to be complete before the highway project is complete. So Phase Two will have to be done before we actually work on the highway. Is that correct?
Not, not entirely correct. I'll do my best to explain it. And please, Mr. Luna, please add to that. So it's meant to be worked on in tandem as the 4E North is being also constructed. But before, it's hard for like these transportation projects because like, for example, a private development project, we have certificate of occupancy.
Right.
So I would describe it like that, that it's, it's not necessarily labeled as a certificate of occupancy. But before there's a final sign off for the freeway project component, that component needs to be in.
Because my understanding was when we looked at this way back when, in 2018, at Planning Commission, that the, that the, all of these infrastructure improvements to roads not related to Highway 101, but impacted by traffic from Highway 101 from construction and stuff, would have to be complete. So you're saying in tandem, but not necessarily complete.
Well, Mr. Luna, he can jump in to, and I can add more further.
So I appreciate the confusion. Plus, all the projects have the word Cabrillo in them, right? So it's, you know, it's like, so it's like, how can you get more confusing? So I think the best slide was the the one that the city showed that had the Phase One, Phase Two of the city project that's being worked on. And that really showed, maybe just to kind of try to break it up in pieces, just to try to simplify it, is that there was a mitigation project identified in the Caltrans EIR. That's what was separated as Phase One. So we really need to get that roundabout done at Los Potos Cabrillo. So SB CAG has an MOU with the city to fund that. And as the city staff has indicated, that will be going to construction now, next year. And so that'll be in place when work on, construction work starts, and that'll offer operational benefits to that intersection. Obviously, the the larger project, which we've been coordinating and collaborating with the city with, is the Railroad Bridge at Cabrillo. And that has a long history of different alternatives that have been sought and different approvals that have been gained and then not gained with the with the Union Pacific over time. But I think we're at a point right now where we're moving forward with the design. And we've been, we have a strategy right now. And it was shown in those slides that Mr. Emerson was walking through that in order to build the interchange at, we have to, and get rid of those left-hand ramps, we have to have an alternative for the southbound off-ramp. And that's going to be using the Los Potos. So essentially, the Cabrillo project can't get built before. It has to be built in the same timeframe. And so we're going to be coordinating with city staff on that.
Okay.
So in sequencing it so that it makes sense, our design teams are coordinating, and then we have the ability to look at it from a constructability standpoint as well with the Caltrans resources and the granite construction that's in the corridor.
Right. Okay, thank you. That that makes perfect sense to me now. That 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 explains why it has to be. And I understand that the Los Potos has to be done because you're going to use that, you're going to use that off-ramp. Yeah, okay. So, and then the Union Pacific is requiring that the Los Potos Bridge come out. And I thought I read in the staff report that the city's responsible for that. Is that correct? For removal of that, that Los Potos Union Pacific Bridge? Contingent upon removal of Union Pacific Railroad Los Potos Bridge by the city, question mark?
What, can, can you point to the page that you're referencing?
Probably not. I have here, oh, it's on the page with the Phase Two isn't funded.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's Phase Three includes the removal of, oh, sorry, I'm on page seven of 324. Yeah, it requires the removal of the Los Potos Union Pacific underpass per UPRR's request. And then, but I thought it said somewhere in here, UPR is concerned that the underpass would become an attractive nuisance and has required the city to remove, retire the underpass as a condition in Phase Two.
Correct. So.
But do, are we funding that removal? That sounds.
Not of the bridge. So the bridge is not ours. It's, it's the railroads. But the road below, so the the termination, creating that into a cul-de-sac rather than a through street is this, would be a city project. That's a city street. And so changing that from a through road or an off-ramp to a Los Potos road and changing it to a cul-de-sac, that.
Okay, so we're not doing the bridge, we're doing the underpass. That's.
So, yeah, just to clarify, Ms. Arsenio, can you put on the Los Potos Bridge removal, underpass removal slide?
I'm sorry, I'll get off this line of questioning after this.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to wait for it up on the screen. Great. So this is the the current southbound off-ramp at Los Potos. So the Highway 101 project closes this off-ramp.
Perfect slide.
Okay. And then, so for this, longer narrative for this. But so it's just cut off by the, it's ends. But UPR's interest, when they were reviewing the Phase Two of the Cabrillo project for the other bridge, they also want to see this underpass go away for multiple reasons.
Right, yeah.
And and so that is the, sort of the Phase Three. It is not a condition of approval because it still needs to go through permitting on its own. We, we are in your conditions of approval legally binding the SB CAG Caltrans team to construct Phase Two. But this one, again, will continue through a process. And this is also part of the component for the SB One Cycle Four Grant application would include this.
Yes. And you can't make it, you can't do it earlier because you need the, you need the off-ramp.
That's correct.
I get that. Okay, good. Thank you for answering that. Okay, I'm just going to move on here. Okay, so I I'm a little bit confused. I looked at, oh, gosh, should I put a page number? I do have a page number, but I don't know if it's right. Yeah, I do. Okay, LCP policy 6.2-28B. It's on page 246 of 324. Calls for the replacement of trees on a three to one basis. But the staff, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, the trees get replaced on a three to one basis. Mr. Bailey's standing up and coming close. But the staff report says, it's on page 13 of 324, says that only oaks are three to one and others are one to one. So am I misreading this policy? Because this says three to one, doesn't it, on all trees?
Commissioner Wiskom and through the chair, it also says, except where site conditions would preclude onsite replanting.
Right, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
And so that is a key component when you're doing actually mainline improvements like this. We don't have an abundance of landscape area beyond what already exists. So that's when we would tap into that exception.
Okay, I, that wasn't made clear. So I just wanted to make sure that, okay, so that's, that's the reason for that. That makes good sense there. Okay. And then on the conditions of approval on page seven of 28, and it's 26 of 324, I guess, 26, does that sound right?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind if I interrupt, I just wanted to draw your attention to the SB CAG representative for the railroad needs to leave. So if there are any questions pertaining to the Amtrak service or train service, we may want to focus on those temporarily.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
I have a real question.
I'll just conclude for right now.
Is that the service that's going to come in the morning? When, when is that going to happen? I keep hearing about it, but is there like a, can you give some more of an exact date, perhaps?
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner, our target date right now is for April 2024. I should note that there are four agencies that would all need to approve a variety of agreements or leasehold agreements with UP. But that is our target date. That's what MetroLink is working against. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for this? No? No? Last call. Thank you for being here. Can we start back with Commissioner Wiskom?
Yeah, thank you.
Please go, continue.
Okay, so I'm on conditions of approval, page seven of 28. Here it is. Okay. And it's 26 of 324 for anyone. Number three, biological resources B. So why are oaks greater than six inches in diameter at breast height? Shall be delineated on plans, but the tree replacement ratio identified in the staff report on page 13 identifies trees with greater than four inches of of diameter at breast height replaced. So why is there two different?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wiskom, I can answer that. So that's the difference between the EIR mitigation measures and our city coastal policies. So our local coastal policies are stricter and actually consider every trees greater than four inches to be a tree that's counted in mitigation, whereas the environmental review sequel that was done only considered trees six inches or greater.
So our conditions of approval are based on the EIR and not on our?
No, they're actually based on both. So this section of the conditions of approval are the mitigation measures pulled over from the EIR directly. So all these sections under D are the mitigation measures pulled over from the EIR that apply to the project. So not all of them, but the ones that apply to our segment and this particular project pulled over to apply as part of the mitigation monitoring requirements. In addition to those conditions, they have to meet any of our other standard conditions, which we're allowed to apply based on policy. And we have standard conditions relating to trees for four inches and greater to capture that, those additional trees. So they have to do both the six inches and then we go beyond that in our standard conditions and require them to do four inches.
Okay, okay. Because I just saw this, the six inches. So I just, okay, thank you.
And it is a good clarification that all of these measures read differently than we would typically have our standard conditions. And it's because their language pulled over directly from the EIR and only updated where we felt absolutely necessary to convey a current standard.
Okay, thank you for that. That clarifies that. Okay. And then on page 229 of 324, there's a discussion about aerially deposited lead that's going to be the soil, that the contaminated soil with aerially deposited, deposited lead is going to be buried in embankment fill. So is this a normal practice that, that this is an okay practice? This is what you do with it? Is that right?
Commissioner Wiskom, yes, I can answer. It is a normal practice. And we do have a Caltrans environmental expert, Lucas, that can address it more specifically. But essentially, Caltrans has standard practices and a coordination, an agreement with the, the lead agency is the Water Board, I believe, as to how they treat hazardous materials. And so we follow those standards. I'll, I'll let the Caltrans team respond to it more specifically.
That's correct. Commissioner through the chair, my name is Lucas Marshelik. I am the environmental planner from Caltrans on the project. Yeah, so aerial deposited lead is a, a common theme on our highways. It's a deposit from our emissions, our tailpipe emissions. It settles on the side of the road. So yeah, standard practice is, is to, leave it in the right way, protect it in place. It's part, it's a standard measure in our design manual. And it's, it's approved by the Department of Toxic, Department of Toxics Services, DTSC. So it's an approved method, standard practice. So.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Okay, that's great. Okay, and page 231 of 324 discusses Segment 4E North, installation of retaining walls. So are any scenic corridors or views impaired by these retaining walls?
Commissioner Wiskom through the chair. No, they're, they've been located on the south side of the highway and there's not views to the ocean, or if that is generally what is looked at, like in the Summer Dillon segment and parts of Montecito. So that vetting was done through the EIR process as to location of potential sound walls and potential visual impacts as, as they relate to each other.
Okay, thank you for that. And I thought that's what you said on the site visit, but you, you weren't speaking very much because you were too busy driving back and forth. And this question, I think, got answered. That's again about the Railroad Bridge Cabrillo. Yeah, so I'm, I'm done. Thank you so much. I'm sorry it took so much time.
All right, never a problem. We just want to make sure all the questions are asked. So next we have Commissioner Wardlow, please.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. And thank you for this presentation. This was helpful. This is complicated. I want to expand on Commissioner Wiskom's questions, which I greatly appreciate because I think she did a more eloquent job than I'm going to do of trying to ask this. So in total, the highway modifications and whole development is not going to move forward until the Union Pacific issue is dealt with? Is that correct? Or no, I'm wrong? Oh, great.
No, Commissioner Wardlow through the chair.
In tandem, in tandem, right.
If I can attempt it, it's that they, they can be constructed in tandem. We cannot, the city will not sign off, give the final sign off on the HOV project until the others are completed construction.
Okay.
So they can construct in tandem, but we will not give our sign off until they're done. And which, and they do need that sign off for funding and closure of their permits. So it's the equivalent to, as Ms. Grant said, a final occupancy clearance on a building. You need that to really move forward for legal reasons. They will need our sign off to, to finalize. So those construction improvements need to be finished up by that time. But they can construct in tandem.
Great.
And that was, just to be clear, that was, that's per the EIR mitigation measure. It allows for that. It just wants them to be completed.
Okay, so the previous Cabrillo pedestrian plan, the one with the long name, that plan that needed Union Pacific to widen the area, that is going to happen in tandem with the highway project. So we're not going to end up in a situation, I guess my question is, we're not going to end up in a situation where we move forward with this highway project and then yet we didn't address the Union and then yet we didn't address the Union Pacific issue, and so we need to come back and do this later? Like, this is all going to happen together?
That is the intent of the mitigation measure, timing component, and then very much why staff has included that as a condition of approval, as a reminder and a pointing to, that that is still very much required.
Okay, that's great. I really appreciate you guys working with me through that. And in the original plan, the 2018 pedestrian plan, it was always going to be one lane and a bike lane? Is that right? Or was it going to be two lanes that are going underneath the, that are connecting from the new roundabout that's closer to Union Pacific that then goes under the freeway, under the rail and under the freeways? That was always going to be one lane? Or was it going to be two lanes?
Commissioner Wardlow, through the chair. It is, there will be underneath the bridge, and I think we might have a cross-section. Okay, so it's meant to have one vehicular lane in both directions. And, but there is going up to the southbound on-ramp. So if you come out of the Cabrillo-Los Potos roundabout, there will, you can go into a right turn pocket to then get on the southbound.
I saw that, okay. That's where I think I was confused. I thought it was like supposed to be two. Okay, never mind, that's helpful. My next question is really like taking a step back because I think a lot of us remember the construction that happened like 15 years ago. I sometimes still try and get on the southbound entry point, and then I'm like, right, that's gone. So when that was removed, what was the rationale back then to remove the southbound ramp? And now we're bringing back the southbound ramp? Because to me, that, you know, it's concerning from a, you know, government efficiency perspective.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Bailey. I'm with the city's Public Works Department. The location of that southbound on-ramp as it used to exist is located very close to where the three lanes merged to two as the, as was implemented with the last project. So it was not a good place to have an on-ramp at the time. But fully recognizing that there's a need and a demand there, that's why it's coming back with this project.
That's a very suitable answer. It's very clear that we need the southbound, the ramp there, somewhere over there to get on so that we're not all driving through Coast Village Road to get on Olive Mill. So really, it was just that the original location wasn't correct. And now we're moving that location, right? It's still going to be around that area, but it's not. We're not bringing it back to the same spot.
It'll get on the freeway in the same proximity. But as Mr. Emerson from Caltrans mentioned, it is their standard now to go to the on-and-off ramps on the right-hand side of the freeway for safety reasons.
Because it used to be, okay. Okay, other question. So when we were reconstructing this about 15 years ago, did we all understand that we were going to have to redo this? Not the southbound thing, but the HOV lane? Was that all understood at that time that we would have to be back here 10 years later redoing this project? Okay.
I think I'm going to tag-team this with Mr. Emerson. But we were talking about this. We appreciate the question you asked at the site visit. So it got us to kind of think about what was the original purpose for that project? So operational improvement. So what that really meant was that we didn't have authority to widen the freeway at that time with that initial Phase One project. Mr. Emerson also looked at what was actually done with that project. He can probably describe that to you. We didn't replace the bridges. We just widened portions of them. And you can actually see in one of the graphics we showed that it was actually only in the southbound direction. So did you want to add something to that? Okay, well, context in the sense that your question, did that answer your question, first of all? And I can elaborate more.
I mean, I think so in that it was always understood that we didn't have the authority to widen the freeway at that time. So we didn't have the ability to build the HOV lane at that time. And we always knew we'd have to come back.
So that was in 2008. And then that work got done between 2008 and 2012. The environmental document for this project that we're talking about today wasn't certified until 2014. So we were in the process of looking at options to widen, but we hadn't gone through the public process to get that authority. And we didn't have the certified environmental document to widen from Santa Barbara to Carpinteria. So it was a much larger project as well going forward. That project just focused on the interchange. It also included some improvements down all the way to Milpus Street. So that's why we called it the Milpus to Hot Springs project. There were improvements at Casique and at Milpus and at Cabrillo.
That was really helpful. So you're saying that there were specific improvements that were made during that project that are still going to be relevant today? We're not scrapping and starting again?
Yeah, and that goes back to the theme that we're talking about is that operational improvements co-in tandem with, you know, the widening projects that we have. They all work together to improve the local circulation, the connectivity, restore coastal access. Casique was an important example of that, so.
So really, the main change that we're doing now that we didn't do then because of approval issues is bringing back, well, bringing the HOV lane. And then we're now bringing back this southbound on-ramp.
HOV lane, and then as Mr. Bailey indicated, it's, you know, we weren't, we weren't in the position to keep that ramp in the left-hand configuration at the time with the third lane in that area. So we're bringing it back. It has taken, I can be honest, it's probably taken longer than we thought, than, you know, 15 years. But, you know, they always, the intent was to come back with a project that would restore that.
That's really helpful. Okay, that makes me feel a lot better. Totally switching gears. So there's lots of discussion around the bikeability of this area, and I think that's really important. Right now, when you're going into this, the next round, the next roundabout that will be created that's going to be below the Hot Springs roundabout to get on the next, oh, the teardrop one. Okay, that one. The bikeability of that is, everybody feels that that's going to work for people at this point? Because when I look at these, the images that are provided, it seems nerve-wracking to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's concerning.
Commissioner Wardlow, through the chair. Let me bring you through the bike options.
Could we go back to the slide?
And we'll go back to the slide. I'm just waiting for it to pop up on the screen. There we go. All right, so, yes, I'm going to switch.
I'm sorry for all these questions. If everybody already understands this.
No, no, this is great. And I think this also addresses, I think, one of the questions you get for public comment and a written comment. I'm going to start big. When we think of our freeway connections all throughout the city and we think of stresses from a walkability or bikeability standpoint, those are huge stresses. Those are documented, well-documented in the pedestrian master plan, bicycle master plan to fix all of those interchanges. So we didn't want to end up with this project being from day one that it's built that then we have the same flaws for, you know, not having good multimodal systems. So for this, again, it plays into the 2018 project that was approved by Planning Commission for the Phase One, Phase Two. That's a critical component on how it talks to the freeway underpass. And when we look at our infrastructure, we think of that the bike infrastructure shouldn't be just spandex riders going through, which is typically, those are the very confident cyclists that you see frequent. And then what you don't see is a lot of families or ages. So with that in mind, that's what our approach in review was from a staff standpoint, reviewing this project. So for the confident, again, riders, we do have options and we have bike lanes in both directions to get, you know, from the Cabrillo-Los Potos roundabout all the way through to the, to the Hot Springs roundabout. But if you don't feel confident as a cyclist, even in the bike lane, then we have multi-use paths as well. So that is what you see in the red dashed lines where the solid red is the multi-use path connection. And so that separates out cyclists from the roadway. And we also have, so that's, that's the, yeah. So the blue would be your on-street bike lanes. Blue dash is your on-street bike lanes. And then the red is the multi-use path. And then, so we also say you're in a bike lane and you don't feel comfortable even being next to traffic. Built into this and what's not reflected in detail, it's very hard for these scales to show every single detail. But there's bike ramps embedded within there. So if you are, say you go underneath this underpass, you can go on a bike ramp and avoid this teardrop intersection. And then you come up through the multi-use path to then get up to Coast Village Road.
This is very helpful.
Yes, and so that's kind of the connection on that side.
Ms. Grant, before you go on and with Commissioner Wardlow's permission, do you have a section or an elevation or rendering of anything that can show this so that we're not just using our imagination? That was my question, and it kind of goes hand in hand.
Yes, let's see. Try number eight.
This definitely is helpful because I was not clear on that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for the musical chairs.
Yeah, this is another one. It's still an aerial. And we do have in the applicant presentation some illustrations, but at least you do have in the brown area, those would be your multi-use path connections. There is another, so as I am speaking right now, it's like I just started to describe the eastbound route. So if you were coming from the waterfront wanting to get back to Coast Village Road. And then, yeah, here's, here's a little bit more of a detail. Thank you, Megan, for showing this. Again, so, yeah, for cyclists in this section, and what we're looking at in this image is you're going westbound. So again, cyclists, there is an on-street bike lane. But if somebody doesn't feel comfortable on the on-street bike lane, you can go in that we're, Megan is pointing right now. That is a multi-use path that's 12 feet.
Okay, this is super helpful.
Yeah, if you can go back to the aerial one more time. The other thing that we also wanted a strong connection to was to the east side neighborhood. So again, the east side neighborhood has long been cut off from the freeway, just as it stands now, from the waterfront neighborhood where, you know, years back, it was part of the grid system. And there really isn't good connections to the waterfront. So the first, not the Phase One of the Los Potos roundabout, but the Phase One that you were alluding to for the work that was near Milpus. One of the connections was the Casique underpass to connect the east side residents that way. But the east side's fairly large. So if you live further towards Old Coast Highway, then the Casique is not as ideal to get to the waterfront. So then you're using Old Coast Highway. Again, that's a mix of on-street bike lane and sidewalk. But that was another thing that we spent a long time was, is to not have cyclists or pedestrians go all the way to the Hot Springs roundabout. So that's where you see where there's a stair connection. And even, so that's beneficial to pedestrians. And then what would be built in the stairs that we would work out in final design would be tracks for a cyclist so you could dismount and then ride, walk with your bike. There's stairs where you can make, where there's a track for your bike. So you don't have to go all the way up to the Hot Springs intersection. But if you are a confident rider, you still can. And if you decide when you're turning that from the Hot Springs road going towards the teardrop, if you still find that you don't want to be on the street, there is a multi-use path right there as well for cyclists and pedestrians for that connection. So this is something, again, we are a vision zero city to eliminate severe injuries and deaths in our roadways. So this is something that we really took a critical eye to. And we would further during the final design just make sure all the ramps and everything connection works from a walkability and biking standpoint.
Thank you very much for your answers. I really appreciate it. That does bring me to another part of the staff report. I saw, and Ms. Ostringer can tell me if this is not relevant for this, but I did see that there is a desire or plans to build a potential connecting over the freeway where, you know, people that are on the east side could walk over the freeway or ride their bike over the freeway. I absolutely love that. I don't know where that fits into these various phases that we're discussing or if that's a completely separate project. Because I got the understanding it was a completely separate project. But I think that would be amazing if we could bring that forward in a meaningful way because that could address some of these issues of having people even deal with this at all.
Yes, Commissioner Wardlow, I'm so glad you brought that up because, yeah, we did mention it in the staff report. Yeah, we are, we're in the process of a feasibility analysis. We have a draft plan that will be at city council in the new year, looking at a pedestrian bike over across. That's roughly would be in the east side at Canada and Pito's Street. And then basically go over the freeway and then ramp down to Dwight Murphy Park. Because again, between these two freeway interchanges is a mile and a quarter gap. And so that would be another very critical point of connecting, again, the east side community, which is also our disadvantaged or environmental justice community, back to the waterfront where a lot of jobs and recreation are for that neighborhood.
Great, thank you. And then this is my last question, I will stop. Totally switching gears. Obviously, our city really appreciates art. I feel like this is all, you know, quite expensive projects that were, you know, somewhat redoing. But now I understand for better reasons and that this was more planned out and understood that this would have to happen. How much would it, what are the cost budgets of us implementing any kind of art in this corridor? And I assume that would be coming from the city or would that be coming from a different funding source?
I'll do my best to answer that. It's something, again, that both the Caltrans team and I think the city team in general, who are building infrastructure to have art components, there's a component to build, you know, again, the safety components and everything of the infrastructure first, and then I look for art opportunities. Again, that was something I think that Mr. Black reviewed with the Design Oversight Board. There wasn't a strong interest at the time for like actual mainline freeway art components. But it is something like with the parallel projects to look at potential art in the future. Does not have a funding source right now, but I'll provide an example, the Olive Mill roundabout. That's just under construction, almost complete. But that was, we did wire it for electrical to potentially have some sort of art element to it in the future. So there are certain things, I think, that Mr. Luna had pointed out, too, that there are opportunities for art. But we'd be looking forward to a funding source for that. And that same goes for city and all of our capital projects. There isn't a separate program. Some cities and counties have that. We don't. That's something to maybe voice when we're in our capital planning and process.
Thank you very much for your time and answers to my questions. This was really helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow. And I'm going to just take a moment to check in for like a time check, not because we're going to stop or anything, but because we've only accomplished about half of our planning commissioner's questions. And we're still going to have the time to complete the series of questions. I want to defer for a moment to Ms. DeBusk. Once we get through the questions, can we then do a time check to see if we want to deliberate or if we want to perhaps, if we think we may want to continue? Would you guide us on what we should maybe ask for if we do have a continuation?
Yes, Chair Bonderson, I'm happy to help. Once we get through and you can determine if you want to move forward or not, yes.
And how we're going to do so, okay. Okay, so I will continue our question period with Commissioner Boss, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to my fellow commissioners. You've navigated through a lot of the same questions that I had. And I'll point, I think when you were discussing the public art locations, it was on page 228 of our packet, if that's what you were looking for. So if we want to start there, I'll go through my series of questions. But I'd also support a consideration of public art. That's something that I really admire about a lot of other jurisdictions throughout our state. And I think it's a great opportunity to engage, well, local artists, as we saw in the last project, but also to pay attention to any cultural significance. Other questions that I have. I have a much better understanding of, I think, the timeline of the, I was really concerned about the pathway underneath the UPRR Bridge. So I think I understand that now, but I may come back to a couple of questions. I did want to note on the staff report, page five, it notes that improvements should incorporate features that reduce traffic. So by encouraging sustainable modes of transportation, and that includes improved pedestrian bicycle and transit facilities. So are those, is the intent for improved pedestrian bicycle and transit facilities to alleviate traffic congestion?
Commissioner Boss through the chair. So, yes, the quick answer is yes. And then, yeah, why you have a multi, you want to encourage just, again, high level. If you don't like traffic congestion, then support active infrastructure. Even if you're not a user of the active infrastructure, it provides choices. And that's a founding, the whole purpose of our circulation element is when you leave your front door, you have a choice to walk, bike, or drive, or take transit. And so with that in mind, and when we were reviewing, again, from a circulation standpoint, it was to have all amenities as well. And it's not just traffic, it's really in the safety as well.
Thank you. I'm trying to visualize. I understand people may, with these improvements, they may be more comfortable riding their bike from Santa Barbara to the Montecito area. But I was having trouble understanding if the intent was for people to be commuting via bike or pedestrian pathways from Santa Barbara to Carpinteria or Ventura.
This is a connection. It's part of the coast route that goes from Ventura to all the way up to UCSB Galita. And on that 30-mile route, some of it's only for the very, you know, I always called spandex riders. Over time, it's to be for all ages and abilities. And again, we can't do the entire route, but through time. And like this is just an example of strengthening those connections.
Thank you. I appreciate those clarifications. I think this may have been partially answered earlier, but on staff report pages six and seven and phase two, even if SBAG and Caltrans are actively seeking construction funds, don't we still need Union Pacific's approval?
That's correct. It's part of the review process. And we have, let's see, I'm trying to think of the technical term for it. But we have been in reviews for that project. And sorry, it will come to me on the naming for that. But the UPR technical staff have reviewed the project and will continue to do that through final design.
Thank you. I'm going to skip to page 253 of our packet. And it may be helpful to bring it up. This was helpful to me in understanding the funding status and the timeline and kind of the overlap. And I'm hoping that you can walk me through it, especially the distinction between Los Potos Cabrio and separately, Cabrio, Los Potos, UPRR Bridges. And if you can also add in the East Side connectivity, just in terms of timeline.
Sure. So the Los Potos Cabrio Roundabout, that one was funded through the Regional Transportation Improvement Program that's associated with Highway 101 funds. The Highway 101 project is extremely complicated in its funding and it's lots of different sources. And again, I would say the primary funding component for the freeway today, it's been more through the SB1 funds in addition to those regional transportation program funds.
I'm going to interrupt you quickly. And I'm, I think I'm needing more clarification just on the timeline. So apologies, I did reference the funding status. But I think the years of construction is especially where I'm, I want to make sure that I'm understanding.
So the, yes, for the 4E South, and that's, we had an exhibit for that as well. So that's just south of the Cabrio interchange. That is fully funded. 4E North is not fully funded, but they're seeking funding this June. And if they receive funding, that is the year construction timeline. For highway, the section that's in the county 4D that connects, that's adjacent essentially to the Olive Mill Roundabout going south, that has also been funded. The Los Potos Cabrio, again, roundabouts funded with Regional Transportation Improvement Program funds. So was the Olive Mill Roundabout. The Milpiss Street improvements, that is also funded with Regional Transportation Improvement Funds associated with Highway 101 project. And then, not identified yet, is the Cabrio-Los Potos, the bridge part. Again, Caltrans putting that as a packet for the SB1 cycle four grant.
Thank you. I appreciate you walking through those. So the Los Potos slash Cabrio, starting in 2024, that is just the Roundabout, correct?
That is just the Roundabout.
And the Cabrio-Los Potos UPR Bridges is cutting off access or closing the exit at the end of Los Potos and addressing the improvements around the UPR Bridges under, where Cabrio goes under them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to navigate to a couple of other questions. And you talked a bit about CEQA and visibility. So on staff report, page seven, it notes the major coastal issues identified for Highway 101 component include preserving the scale and visual quality, protection of public views, preservation of incorporation of landscaping, access to the coast and potential flooding. And I had a question for myself. I wasn't clear around, is visibility addressed in this area?
Commissioner Boss through the chair. Yes, so different than the proposal in 1993 when Caltrans was first looking at widening and the city reacted to it, was that proposal didn't include the amount of landscaping that we're seeing today. It was pretty void of that, those kinds of elements. And the community was quite clear that that is what makes this portion of highway special. And so there's great attention put into the policies and the design guidelines that mature trees should be maintained to the extent feasible. And then replacement plantings and plant materials need to be characteristic of our area. And so by virtue of the landscape plan and the vetting through the working group and design review, those visual policies have been addressed very distinctly different than the prior proposal.
Understood, thank you. I want to move to a different, I guess, topic around the Class 1 impacts. So I think you had on slide 11, there is a statement of overriding considerations, acknowledging impacts, but they don't outweigh the benefits. And in the staff report and in the packet in total, you addressed the impacts related to construction and also to operations. I guess I'm more broadly trying to understand. So we're saying that the benefit of having the changes to the on-ramps and off-ramps and the HOV lanes and the pedestrian and bike improvements, those outweigh the impacts, which I think that the language around the Class 1 impacts just made me nervous. So I want to make sure that we are making the determination that these benefits are outweighing all of those impacts that were listed.
Commissioner Boss through the chair. Yes, that is correct. Those, that is, and I believe there's, in your staff report, I'll pull it up. We state for you that this,
The mitigation.
Statement of overriding considerations, which summarizes what we believe are those trade-offs. Sorry, that is not the language. But in essence, it is, here we go, that those improvements, so page 18 of your packet, that those trade-offs of the improvements to the network really outweigh the temporary visual construction impacts of having trucks and fencing and guardrails in a temporary fashion and the temporary construction impacts to traffic because we are getting these improvements that will improve the long-term circulation of our local network in addition to the highway itself. So that is the trade-off. Also, it acknowledges in the addendum. And there's part of why they considered it still a Class 1 impact, even though we have those intersection improvements, is because at the time of the AAR, they couldn't ensure that they would be completed in a timely fashion. And so they said, we want, these are the mitigation measures, they shall do it. But they wanted to make sure that that was incorporated. That timing component is really what reduces that impact. And so the fact that now we have lined up those timing components, those elements have been completed, they go a long way to addressing that that original identified Class 1 impact.
Thank you. You came up, were you adding?
Commissioner Boss, I think Megan summed up perfectly. If you have any questions about the reason we're asking for a statement of overriding considerations or the process, I'm able to answer any questions about the process.
Perfect, thank you. And I want to acknowledge, I think, well, it started on page 266U. That addendum did address a lot of the impacts and noted mitigation measures. Just, I really want to understand the weight of what we're asked to do today.
Commissioner Boss through the chair. The reason we are asking for a statement of overriding considerations is because the city of Santa Barbara is a responsible agency under CEQA. Caltrans is the lead agency, Caltrans being the public agency undertaking the project. And because an EIR was prepared and certified and addendum was prepared, we have a certified EIR, however, for, because there are Class 1 impacts, the responsible agency also has to make a statement of overriding considerations.
Thank you. I appreciate the detail and thoughtfulness in the response. A more specific question around page 280. A question about the new utility pole. I was curious, will that need to be moved during or following the UPRR work? So it'll need to be, so it's being consolidated and moved first for this project, for 4E South and North. But will it need to be moved for the Union Pacific Bridge project?
Commissioner Boss, I'm not clear on how it relates to the UP project. But in terms of utilities in general, I do just want to add some clarity that the utility companies are responsible for their permit, obtaining permits for their utility relocation. So there's certain utility lines, you know, power, telephone, gas, water, that run through the highway corridor. That's where we want our utilities. Some of them have conflicts with this new construction, so they'll be realigning them or abandoning certain segments and doing a new segment where it makes sense for them. Those utility companies are responsible for their own permitting. But we know that those will happen, so we wanted to acknowledge them. One of the elements is that, yes, there's a power pole that will need to be relocated. Those permits will come in after this approval. They'll have to come in and get coastal review. Whether that's an exemption, there are certain exemptions for utilities in the coastal zone. But some may require, you know, might require coastal development permit. When they come in with the details of where they're trenching, where they're relocating, that's when that analysis will happen. And they'll receive the permits that are appropriate to that work. It's, so other than that, I'm not clear on how it relates. They're responsible, so they might feel the need to come in earlier than the bridge project. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. I had a question on page 306 of our packet as well. It had a note that the project was not expected to stimulate residential or related commercial growth in the area, although it spans several years. So does that mean that all labor will be local? So there's not a need for temporary housing of workers?
Give us a second to find it.
Commissioner Boss, could you repeat the question?
Sure. The project is not expected to stimulate residential or related commercial growth in the area, although it spans several years. So does that mean that labor will be local? So there's not a need for temporary housing or it won't need to stimulate residential or related commercial growth?
I can't speak to where the labor will be sourced from unless Caltrans can. However, that was the conclusion that was reached in the 2014 EIR. And this project continues to be consistent in that regard.
Okay. I saw some nods from SBAG and Caltrans. Did you also want to address that?
Yeah, Commissioner Boss through the chair. So, yeah, it is a long-term project. We do have a contractor onboard and there's a number of workers that are working in the area. But they pull most of the labor from outside the area. So there's a number of different trades that work on these projects. So, and they have their own labor pools. Most of them are not in the Santa Barbara area. But, so ironworkers, carpenters, and so on, electricians. So, you know, most of them, you know, come in from outside the area. I think the one thing we should focus on is that this project has created jobs in the corridor. And so it's provided an economic benefit. You can see that in some places, you know, just the number of people, they, you know, they need to, some of them do stay certain nights on certain times of year where they may have to stay in a hotel or for a period of time, or they're working nights. And then the granite construction is the contractor that Caltrans has hired. So they're a local contractor. Most of their professional staff are local, so they live here locally or in the North County and they commute in for the day. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the additional details. I think this is back to Ms. Pujo on page 283. The note that since 2017, the evaluation criteria in the CEQA guidelines had been amended. But my understanding was that there were no substantial changes to the scope of the project analyzed in the Highway 101 Revised EIR. So I wanted to- So I wanted to make sure that you were advising us, so there was a legal issue with 2014, and there have been updates and addendums since then, so since 2014 and up to the 2023 addendum, we've settled and completely addressed those issues and any new issues.
Commissioner Boss, yes, that's correct. The initial EIR was released in 2014, and that EIR analyzed the full suite of SEQA resources. The 2014 EIR was challenged and recirculated, and that's the 2017 EIR that's referenced. That EIR mostly does an analysis on traffic and transportation, and then it incorporates the rest of the SEQA resources by reference from the 2014 EIR. So the 2014 EIR had the majority of resources, the 2017 EIR had traffic, and together, those, that package was certified in 2017. And so the standard that we use for analysis is the 2017 standards, and so that was the date the EIR was certified, and the addendums that were created after that are basically saying that because we have certain details or design details or more information about the project, that it's still consistent with the 2017 certified EIR.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think those are my questions.
Okay, I would normally suggest we finish the question period, but it seems like everyone's getting a little fidgety, so I'm going to suggest just a five-minute stretch-your-legs break. It's 5:06 now, let's do 5:11. Okay, thank you.
And we are going to start again with Commissioner DeLuco's questions, please go right ahead.
You guys have lucked out, I'm not going to ask a lot of questions.
So you say-
I know that's unusual, I really mean that. I guess my question gets back to the funding and the completion, I don't know if staff or the applicant wants to answer the question. I understand, so most of the funding is in place now, and I think you're going through one more funding cycle to get funding for the last leg of it.
Commissioner DeLuco through the chair, yes, that's correct. So we're in the middle of, so the current statewide funding cycles where we've been most successful in getting funding for these projects is on a two-year program cycle. And so we just got awarded funding in June of '23, the next awards would be made in June of '25, but you need to kind of develop your application, go through a process. We've already hit some great milestones today, we've been agreed to co-nominate or co-sponsor with Caltrans, so that puts us at a higher level for the next round of applications. And then we're putting together our nomination package, those will go in sometime next year, and then awards will be made in June '25.
Is this for the UPPR, the bridge portion of it?
That is one project that will be included in that overall package, the 4E North, and then some other City of Santa Barbara improvements and some transit components as well.
Okay, so real fast, then we have completion dates on this, from your experience, is any of the funding tied to having to complete at a certain time?
Yes, well, yes it is. I mean, so when we submit our nomination, we have to indicate a delivery year, so when we're ready to go to construction. So the most recent award is that we have to deliver the 4E South project in this current fiscal year, so our plan is to have funding allocated next May, May '24. Likewise, the same, you know, deadlines apply in the future funding cycles.
I realize you run into complications sometimes within construction, you find things, but are you pretty much, has this pretty much been on cycle, you know, as far as completion dates on the different phases of the project over the years?
Yeah, I appreciate the question again. So the Carpinteria segment finished ahead of schedule by a few months, the Summerlin segment, I think it's pretty much on schedule, maybe a little bit early, and then, right now, we're looking to try to finish that middle segment that we call the Padaro segment, which is the longest one, and it's on time. So right now, end of '24, I think, was the original planned schedule, so we've been fortunate to work through a lot of issues, but stay on schedule.
One final question, do you run into overage, do you ever come into overages on costs sometimes, and how do you guys handle that?
It does happen, but in this case, I think we want to draw credit to the delivery method that we're using, the construction manager, general contractor, so we're able to identify risks before the contract's awarded, include the, those are known, sometimes you do encounter things, like when we're doing the Olive Mill and San Isidro Roundabout, there were a lot of utilities that weren't on plans that were uncovered and had to work through that, but for the most part, all the projects have been finished at the budget or under budget.
I want to thank you, I want to thank my commissioners for asking such great questions today, so I'm fine for now.
Excellent, thank you. And next we have Vice Chair Bauckey again.
Just, the problem of going first is something comes up. So my only question in it was actually to David Black, who's not here, so it's going to go to staff now. Was there any discussion and consideration in the discussion about art, about any kind of entry, signage, monumentation on the Olive Mill overpass? I mean, it seems like a perfect location, that's basically where your boundary starts, and-
Commissioner Bauckey through the chair, yes, and there is discouragement of having anything on the bridge structure itself, if that's what you're referring to. So the opportunities are, and the team can speak to it, more specifically, we, you know, asked of monument art, like in the landscape area, or treatment art, you know, to the structure itself, either the bridge or even median, some jurisdictions will have, you know, a certain pattern or, you know, waves on the median itself. There are limitations in terms of safety and Caltrans standards for materials of just how much something can protrude, what kind of materials can be used, length, you know, lifetime and strength. So it's a pretty tight box as to what kind of art can be applied. But there was discussion of potential opportunity in the, like, the city, the teardrop adjacent area for, you know, monument or signage. There wasn't support for it from the working group or ABR, but that was one of the items or ideas thrown out there as for their consideration.
Okay, and if the commission thinks it's a good idea, there's a condition that you referenced when we were out on the, and that seems, gives it an opportunity for a future if that was so desired, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So what we're trying to address is the policy that was written in, right? So the coastal policy really wants to allow for this to be part of highway improvement projects if there's support for it. It's a little unclear in terms of the process, because it kind of puts it on both the city or Caltrans shall consider, which is strong, and then a little weaker in language, and it's unclear, is it the city, is it Caltrans? Art requires funding, there is a art team, staff, as part of Caltrans that works on this specifically, as you've seen in other jurisdictions, where they come up with these elements, and I was in contact with them throughout the process, but as there was less and less support, we didn't pursue that further. But Caltrans does have a mechanism to kind of come up with an art component, but it is unclear if the funding is solely on the city or the, or Caltrans, if it's a shared element. It seems there would at very least need to be some component of the city if we're the ones recommending it. So it would require an allocation of some funds to at least get that going, and then Caltrans cooperation to see that through.
Okay, so how would we, do we recommend as part of this to the council if they consider funding, or how would we go forward if that was something the commission would like to recommend?
Like to do. Maybe Ms. Ostringer can help, or others.
Commissioner Bauckey through the chair, we can't condition a project for future allocation of funds, so I think that's why the language was shall consider, it's the strongest we could get there to say, please, please do this, and we will hold you to your, to the consideration of it, but to say that shall is basically forcing the city to allocate, or Caltrans to allocate certain funding.
Okay.
Commissioner Bauckey through the chair, there's one, we can certainly also ask the applicant to consider funding or partial funding, I think, you know, as with the Olive Mill Roundabout, that they at least put in infrastructure for it to be electrified, so that then the community could put in a tree or holiday, you know, lights, et cetera. So there's a coordination there, and I think to Ms. Ostringer's point is that we can't require it, but we can ask it, and that's what the policy is encouraging.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to add some color to the process that was conducted by the design review team. So essentially, like Ms. Arceñega was saying, that we were trying to develop that process for the design, considering the policy that was the city's, but also the constraints that are in the state guidelines for including art elements or some types of enhanced aesthetics into the project. And so basically, there were three categories that we considered, community identifiers, so essentially, that was kind of, I think, what you were mentioning, is like UC Gateway community identifiers are like what's in the, if you've been to Summerlin right now, they decided they wanted to put the name Summerlin on the bridge at Evans Undercrossing, and when the city was established, and so that is integrated, and so that's really something you need to know early on, because it's part of the design, it's part of the structure, and you need special permissions to do those types of things. There's transportation art, so we set aside locations, that was in your packet, where standalone art that would be funded separately could go into the project footprint. And then there were gateway monuments, and those are things you see, like if you drive up the 101 corridor, you're entering into the City of Santa Maria or something like that, and you can see those. Those are usually done via separate funding process and encroachment permit, so they're all very different, they all kind of have different funding, some don't come with funding, but some can be included. But again, it was clear from the design review team that they didn't want the bridges adorned with, you know, the things that were part of the project, they wanted to keep the style and the architecture honest with the materials and clean.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the advantage of going last is that all of my questions regarding the funding and the timeline have been asked, and actually, a curiosity I had about the findings were also asked by my colleagues, so my questions are a little bit more detail-oriented, and it will begin by thanking both Ms. Arceñega, who drove the van smoothly, and of course, the three consultants, applicants who came with us on our site visit. During the site visit, we had the pleasure of getting out and standing on the sidewalk, and we had a number of questions while we were there. All right, we are live, so I'm going to go ahead and continue, and I'll start my question again, I was just thanking everyone for the site visit, and while we were on-site, one of the questions I'd asked was if you had, or if you could bring for us, information about the underpass, right where we were standing, and how the spaces would be designated. Now, I do have this drawing, which is one, I was wondering if you had more details to share with us on how the sidewalk portion is going to be divided for bicycles, I'm assuming they are the less experienced bicyclists that we are assuming will not be on the street, plus the pedestrians, plus anyone else who might be using this space. Do you have anything like that to show us today?
We do, we're just waiting for the-
Why don't I do the questions that don't require the imagery, and then we'll come back to you when you have the images. So my question that has to do with this is, does anyone know how many people generally use this path, perhaps, either leisurely or for other reasons, to walk from the beach to Coast Village Road on average? Is it a high pedestrian corridor?
Chair Bonderson, that's a great question. I believe we tried, I don't have the number.
In comparison to somewhere in downtown?
We try, it would be lower because it's a high-stress connection, so, but there is still pedestrians and cyclists, there have been counts in the past, I apologize, I don't have those numbers, but that's the barrier, is that there isn't good sidewalk and bike facilities now, so we'll see it lower. Most people, I think, bypass or go to Lake Channel Drive, and then go to the, what's the nice hotel, the, that's Miramar, not Miramar, the Biltmore, or Biltmore, to Butterfly Beach, and then you cross up to Coast Village Road that way.
I know that we see bicyclists, especially more advanced bicyclists, using this area a lot, but I was just curious how many pedestrians we potentially are serving currently, or how we would improve, by improving it, how much more pedestrian traffic we would encourage, because I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to visualize who would use that, is there a lot of housing connecting to business there, or is it more tourist use, or do you have any kind of-
Chair Bonderson, I would say all of the above, it's a regional and local connection, so there is, yeah, housing along Coast Village Road and surrounding neighborhoods, there's the, all the, you know, commercial and restaurant businesses, which is a draw for both locals and tourists to get there, and vice versa, to get from there, which is popular Coast Village Road, again, to the waterfront, and then the other direction from Old Coast Highway for the east side as well, that's what we discussed of how it's a current barrier.
Yes, I know you touched on some of this earlier, I was just going into a little bit more detail because I'm excited about the improvement. I'm just curious to know how that space would be shared, since on this particular drawing, it's just a solid color. So I was wondering, are you dividing it, are you designating it for bicycles versus-
So, let's see, we're just waiting for it to pop on the screen of the, thank you.
We'll get there, don't worry.
Yeah, we'll get there. I know, I'm such a visual person, too, that it's hard for me to discuss without graphics.
Pardon the interruption, the screen is not cooperating, so I'm going to restart it.
We can continue.
Yes.
And we'll come back to the separation question if you do have it on, oh, is it on now?
Yeah.
Janet, can you hear us? Yes, she says yes.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, so let's see if the screen loads up. Thank you, Janet.
While we're waiting for the actual graphics to show up, again, just to repeat for those viewers that now have audio back, you asked about the green, I think that's a final detail that we'll look at and work with the applicant team on, but if there was, we would have it as conflict striping when there's, you know, right at the intersections, but not necessarily for the actual bike lane.
Okay, so that's still up for discussion and decision and so on, but you're thinking otherwise, not necessarily painting?
No, again, we would have, as far as for space allocation, you'd have the allocation for vehicles, and then you would have an on-street bike lane, which is what you would see standard inner town, but for those, because there's some cyclists that are not even comfortable riding alongside vehicles, and so that's why we have the adjacent multi-use pass, so you're off the roadway, only at the roadway when you're at the, you know, freeway on and off crossings.
Yeah, and the images that we have available, not using the screen, it just seems like quite narrow, and so I know an experienced bicyclist would be comfortable, but maybe the less experienced one.
And it's hard for these visual simulations, because they are at a, in some of the images, they're at a skew, and so-
I know, that's why I was asking if we had other-
That's what's a little bit difficult, because I know on some of the visuals, it looks smaller than what it actually is, so it is standard to have-
We're doing our best to use our broadest imagination to-
Yes.
And that's part of the question that I had asked at the site visit, if there were more- more graphics or even overlays, like what's there now versus what it's going to be. I think that could have helped us today. I would have loved to have that. My last comment with the images that were provided is the night images are very concerning to me. If I was a pedestrian, I would not be comfortable walking here at night, but I'm also wondering if it's a bad printout. And I see head nodding, so I'm going to hope that the final version is a lot more electric, electrified, as John, as Vice Chair Bauke called it. Okay, so that covers a few of my questions. I'm hoping we'll still get a graphic. We'll see what happens, but I'll move on. And my, my, my last question on this specific topic, and I know you said it, I'm just gonna repeat it to be really clear. The, the multi-use area that is designated on the sidewalk section here, since we don't have graphics, but here, the little, the part on the inside of the column, that is multi-use, meaning less experienced bicyclists are welcome to use that, and pedestrians are able to use it.
Correct.
And will there be a designation or a separation to keep pedestrians out of the path of a bicyclist in that area?
That, that would be a, a shared use path, just, just as you see the beachway. And another example would be the Los Pacitas Modoc multi-use path.
Yeah.
So that, that would be the intent. And you will still have sometimes friction between a cyclist and pedestrian, but it's not versus vehicle.
And is it two-directional as well, or is it, are you encouraging one direction on one side and one direction on the other? Is there any-
Between, yeah, where you're headed, so I would anticipate you would have, yeah, two directions. So for example, on the-
On the right side, you're going in one direction.
I know, I'm so bad with the, yes, if you were on the westbound leg closer as you're driving to Santa Barbara, that side, that, again, you can go in both directions, and vice versa.
However, it's just a logical expectation, it's not a, there's nothing that's going to tell a user that they should be courteous and do it that way? It's just kind of open, free-for-all?
It, it would be, yeah, just how we have the, the beachway now, and, and we could have signage of a shared facility that's what we typically have signed.
And Ms. Grant, please don't misunderstand my questions. I'm not trying to put you on the spot or judge you negatively for this or anything. I'm just curious to figure out what has been thought through on this, in the space. My personal interest is to make that space as welcoming and as desirable to use as possible. And that's why I'm asking these specific questions, is what is being done to make those spaces feel easy and comfortable to use? And I'm wondering if it could use a little bit more work, but that's just a broad blanket statement of maybe it could, and it would be nice to let you think about that. Lastly, the carpool lane, I believe this will probably end up back in Mr. Luna's wheelhouse, but the HOV carpool lane, where? We're adding this segment to connect to the segment that has already been made, sections two, three, four, five. But where does it end? Like, does it continue into Santa Barbara, or does it end at some point at the end of the segment?
Yeah, great question. So in the southbound direction, so we're going to be building a carpool lane that essentially starts around Sycamore Creek and heads south, and then it continues south. When the whole project is finished, it'll be opened up, you know? And Carpinteria segment is already open in the southbound direction. And when, a good example is that one opened up, because it was connecting to the previous project that was built in part Santa Barbara County, part Ventura County. So to answer your question, it's about 16 miles of carpool lanes in each direction.
And, and the one that we're here to talk about today is going to have it, does it end at the most northern end of this project we've discussed today?
In the northbound direction.
And it just stops? Do we have any plans to continue it, or is that just where it's gonna begin?
It ends at the project limits. You get into that tricky situation about state, state converting general purpose lanes to carpool lanes, and that's, yeah.
Again, I'm not judging, I'm, I'm actually just curious.
That's just, that's just the, the climate for, you know, for-
And I'm happy to hear that it may just stay the way it is, that's nice, too. I just wanted to know if we had any other plans. Well, that concludes my question, question series, and I'm gonna just look left and right. Do we have any other questions that may have come up? If not, I'm gonna do this without my screen. Shall we, I'm speaking to my planning commissioners, shall we continue to get through the end of deliberations and be through? Let's sit, get through it. If you'd like to speak, would you please give me some indication? I'll write your name down and keep it in order, and do my best to, ooh!
It works.
It does work. So first, we are going, thank you, Commissioner Lodge, and go ahead and get started. If you want to speak, turn on your light. I didn't know it would work, it's good news. Commissioner Lodge, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You may have heard that there was opposition to the, this plan way back when, and what Caltrans proposed was a concrete ditch through Montecito. No landscaping, no nothing. It was a horror, if you'll excuse my saying so, any of you that are in the audience that were involved with it. And so that's why there was, one of the reasons why there was a lot of opposition. This pro, I'm happy to see what has been presented today. The landscaping is beautiful, and it's, and it's doing the job. The other big issue was undergoing under that pinched, and pinched area under the railroad bridge. And it took a long time to finally get to where we, we have adequate space now for, for pedestrians and bike riders. So I'm very happy to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. And even, even though I have to usually wait till the end, I just want to build on something Commissioner Lodge said. You didn't mention that this is almost 100 years that we've been waiting for that roundabout to be put in. Did you want to add something? I don't want to take your thunder, but that's really exciting stuff.
That, that was, I did bring it up a couple of commission meetings ago. The Los Patos Cabrio Roundabout was initially proposed in 1924.
So we're, we get to-
It was part of, of a, a city streets and parkways plan, which included the work of the Olmsted Brothers, so.
Thank you for adding it, this is the right-
Something that takes a long time.
This might be the longest of all proposals. But I just had to make sure that it landed in the right hearing, that's very important stuff. Next, we have Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll say ditto to the appreciation for the, the landscaping. I think we're, we're not known for having this beautiful landscaping along the 101 right now, so I'm really looking forward to that. A couple of notes, there was a slide from the applicant about listing, I think it was around community outreach, so you listed community organizations, homeowners associations, and businesses. But I wanted to make sure that in outreach, you were including renters and commuters specifically. So those weren't specifically called out, and wanted to make sure that they, they are included in the outreach. I think they're the ones who are using the area the most, and will potentially use the, the bike and pedestrian paths on a daily basis as well. I, I am still hesitant about the, the multi-use pathway underneath the 101. As a not-confident cyclist, I would not be using the, the bike lane that's on the road. And I'm, I, I'm also not confident walking along the, the bike path along the beach because of run-ins with cyclists. So I do want to make sure that we're, that we're taking whatever precautions are needed to make sure that everybody is, is safe and welcomed. I think often, when we have a bike lane and there's a path right next to it, people assume that the bicyclists are going to be on the road, and then they're surprised when there's a cyclist on the, the multi-use path. So just want to give a little bit more consideration to that. I think those are my only additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Boss. Commissioner Wiscombe, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. I think it's a nice project. The landscaping's gonna add a lot to this. I just hope that, that the maintenance will be considered. I, I know it's all low-water use planting, and I appreciate all the trees. I think we just have to make sure, we have to be cognizant that, that we do our jobs in terms of maintaining it. I can certainly support the project, and I don't know, Ms. Arsenega, can you put the, the slide up that shows what we're supposed to do here? Because I know it's, it's like five different things.
We can't, right?
Oh, we can't put it up yet.
But we can refer to the page in the-
Yeah, the page in the, in, I'll tell you where the findings are. Yeah, they're on page 16 of 324, recommended findings, section 10, and they go 16, 17, 18, and even 19. So I, I'll just say that I can, I can support the recommended findings and also the coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe, and thank you for drawing our attention to the pages. Next, we have Commissioner DeLucio, please.
Again, the landscaping is great. And also, I like having, well, it'd be great having those extra lanes, HOV lanes, let's not lose track of that. And I, I think I can make the findings, too, and especially the, the finding for statement of overriding consideration. I think there's a good monitoring program and reporting in place here, so that, that gives me the confidence that, to move forward with the SEQA document as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Wardlow, please.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson, and thank you to the applicant for the presentation. I feel like I learned a lot today. So I, I believe I can make the findings. I agree with all the fellow commissioners' comments around the beautification and the landscaping and the trees. I do really hope that, that within the conditions of approval, the specific aspect around the Union Pacific piece moving simultaneously in tandem, that, you know, we don't end up in a situation where 10 years from now, we're back doing some big redo of this project, given that we've already done that. So I appreciate everyone's work on this, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bauke, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I can make the findings that were asked for, and, and the overriding considerations and the SEQA document. And I do have to say, this, as I think Commissioner Lodge noted, you know, some of us have seen and lived through a lot of this improvements for years and years and years, and going back earlier than the 90s. And, you know, we've come a long ways from when we had stoplights on 101. So we've moved a long ways. I appreciate how it is, the project has changed to be multimodal, and to me, one of the most important things of, of the 101 in motion program is adding a commuter train service into Santa Barbara, something that was discussed in the 90s, and there was opposition to that, which I disagreed at the time, but, but we're coming full circle, we're making progress. Luckily, we're not waiting to, you know, they're not gonna make the 1929 situation era, where we should have a train hopefully much sooner or so. And thank you for your presentation. The graphics and, that, lots and lots of drawings, the renderings were the ones that told the story, which really shows what we're getting, and I think the, the community would be very happy with it when, when they actually see it show up like those renderings. So, thank you very much.
And that leaves me, so I will just start by, by saying, Vice Chair Bauke stole my thunder. I was gonna say, as long as I've been alive, I remember projects on the 101. My earliest, earliest, earliest memory is walking across the 101 to get to the other side, and then all of a sudden, you didn't do that anymore. So every time you get on the freeway to go longer distances, you think, God, are they still working on this freeway? I'm really excited to know that the end is in sight, and I'm looking forward to a moment in my own personal lifetime where I don't remember work, construction on the freeway. Looking forward to that break. So please, full force ahead, and, and let's get it done, I'm excited. I do share the, the sentiment about the excellent landscape and hardscape. I personally like the Santa Barbara cobble. I have not heard that term before, but I really like what it looks like. And I'd like to just say, when you do go out to the community to do your outreach, please make sure that there's more graphic detail on the multi-use portion, the part that pedestrians and bicyclists will use, because we're encouraging, we're trying to encourage more bicycle use, we're trying to get away from cars, let people walk, so let's make that space, take the time to develop that space, whatever it ends up looking like. And lastly, I will just, I will just say, the Los Patos detail that I encouraged Commissioner Lodge to share, to me, it feels like sort of the period at the end of the sentence. It, this, this, it was proposed 100 years ago, this is the last segment of the project, it's coming full circle, something that we can all enjoy and say, this long, long project is finally, hopefully, coming to a close. And I know it's several years out, but it's something to look forward to. The light at the end of tunnel is visible. So I, I can also make the findings, and I'm happy to support the motion when somebody makes it. So let me welcome my fellow commissioners. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, just, I'm not sure. I think I'll just do it from the staff report, if that's okay? And say, we're on page 16 of 324, it's section 10, recommended findings. The planning commission finds the following. In A, environmental review, 1, A, and under A, small letter A, is, is numbers 1, 2, and 3 with A through D.
Okay.
Is this all right, to do it this way?
Just covering all the-
Yeah, just cover all, rather than read all this. And the planning commission finds and accepts that the environmental review package, the 2014 EIR, 2017 EIR, 2020 addendum, and 2023 addendum constitutes a complete and accurate and adequate and good faith effort at disclosure under SEQA. And then, number two, full disclosure. The planning commission finds and accepts the environmental review package, as I read before, constitutes a complete and accurate and good faith effort at disclosure under SEQA. Number three, location of documents. Haven't seen this one before. The documents and other materials constitute the record of proceedings upon which the decision is made are in the custody of the secretary of the planning commission, of the planning division located at 630 Garden Street. That's a new one for me. Okay. And then, number four, statement of overriding considerations, which I, which I won't read, but is there, it's on page 18 of 324 in the staff report. And number five, environmental reporting and monitoring program starts on page 18 and goes to page 19 of 324 in our documentation. And then finally, B, the coastal development permit. The project is consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act, as described in section 7B of the planning commission staff report dated October 26, 2023. And two, the project is consistent with all the applicable policies of the city local coastal plan, all applicable implementing guidelines, and all applicable provisions of the code, as described in section 7 of the planning commission staff report dated October 26, 2023.
And I'll second your motion.
Oof!
You got it all.
And I, and I just want to give a sincere thank you to Commissioner Wiscombe for taking that on. Hey, there was a time before technology, I'm sure, that they made it through these hearings. So you had a little practice. Well, thank you for taking that on. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a, a motion from Commissioner Wiscombe, a second from Commissioner DeLucio. Ms. Johnson, would you please take a roll call vote for us?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bauke?
Yes.
Chair Bonderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And what an exciting motion to pass. Congratulations. Mr. Busk, is there any appeal period on this? Okay, so there's a 10-day appeal period, I just wanted to double-check, since it's very different than projects we see day-to-day. And we look forward to seeing this project come to fruition. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we just have our administrative agenda. I don't know if there's anything urgent, we could maybe postpone it, if there's nothing that we need to know between today and next week? Okay, so at that, in that case, we have our next here-
She has one.
Oh, you do have one. My- Oh, you do have one. You didn't turn on your light.
She did, and she just turned it off after--
I'm sorry. My apologies. Thank you to my vice chair for letting me know.
Apologies, Madam Chair. Just a note about the staff hearing officer from the liaison report. Ms. DeBusk mentioned the appeal. And if anybody was interested in watching the hearing for, I think it was 225 Equestrian, that was during the October 18th show meeting.
That is coming back to the Planning Commission, yes.
So it's definitely one that we should watch. And you're expecting, Mr. Busk, you're expecting those in December at this moment? Do we have a schedule yet?
Possible. Chair Bonderson, they may all come on December 14th. It's something I want to work out with you, but that's the current plan.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that. We still have time. And so everyone else, if you have a liaison report, let's expect it next week. And that concludes our November 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission hearing. It is 5:57, and we'll see you all next week. Thank you.